I call the Board of Selectments meeting for January 29th, 2018 to order. As required by open meeting law, we are informing you that we will be video, audio taping, as well as live broadcasting this public meeting. In addition, anyone in the audience wishing to video or audio tape must tell the Chair now. Hearing no one, please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. It's with a heavy heart that I have to announce the passing of Jimmy Marsaline tonight, and I'd like to start tonight's meeting with a moment of silence for Jimmy and his family. Thank you. Jimmy's services, the wake will be Friday, four to nine at Don Beal and Ames, and the funeral is Saturday at Holy Trinity at 10:00 a.m. I don't have to tell anyone that's here how much Jimmy's done for the town of Harwich, and it's really sad news. Thank you. Weekly briefing.
Thanks, Carolyn Carey, Community Center Director. I just wanted to let you know that February is the birthday slash anniversary of the community center. We will be 18, so in celebrating, we have a few events. The first one is that on February 8th, you can pick up your treasure map of where the ferry doors are located in the town of Harwich. So we have ferry doors scattered throughout the town of Harwich, and there's a map that goes with it. Pick your map up on February 8th and return it with yourself and whatever fairies you've found on February 20th. We will have a celebration and a movie geared more towards children, but you're all welcome to search for the ferry doors as well. The next event is on February 15th at 6:00 p.m. It is the Bean Town Medium. We had her once before, and we sold out in two days, so if you're interested, the tickets will be at the community center. They're $10. That's February 18th, a Thursday night at 6:00 p.m. And then the last one is that we'll be doing an indoor farmer's market on Thursday, February 22nd, from 3:00 to 6:00 p.m. And I have some spaces left if there are any vendors who are interested in that, but the public is welcome, and that's a free event. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Carol. Anyone else for weekly briefing? Public comment and announcement?
How are you, Chris Joyce, Voter Information Committee? In preparation for the town meeting on Monday, May 7th, I'm going to ask you to mark your calendars. On the 10th, April 10th, Financial State of Harwich, we'll be taping that in this room. Tina Games and Pam Goswell will be the leads. We're going to probably break that up into two parts this year and have the two schools separate, but still with some of the players who know the town finances, et cetera. And then on the 24th of April, we have what we call our pre-town meeting, 9:00 a.m., also in this meeting, in this room. Peg Rose will review with the stakeholders all the approved town warrant articles, especially the big-ticket items. And if we have a contested race of the nine possible vacancies that are coming up, we have scheduled with Chatham Group of the League of Women Voters a debate. And if there is no contested office, regardless, I should say, of whether or not, we will have interviews with all of the candidates running for the various offices. And then I'll remind folks that April 17th is the last day to register to vote, to be eligible to vote at the town meeting. One more thing we're working on with our town moderator is a program we hope to tape in the next week or so. Got to work that out with Jamie. And the topic's probably going to be something like how to prepare, how should a voter prepare for town meeting, or 10, you know, the top 10 things to get, to do before you come. And that's it.
Great, thank you.
But I would like to talk about the Friends of the Council on Aging for a moment. New subject. We're sponsoring or hosting a Valentine's Lunch at, guess where, Bob? The Cove. From, this is on Valentine's Day itself, 11:30 to 12:30. The tickets are $15, but we have many scholarships available if seniors, you know, need some help in that area. So we'll have a few posters around and hope you will encourage a way for seniors to get together and socialize. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment and announcement? Consent agenda, Larry?
Mr. Chairman, I move the following consent agenda items. A, approve the minutes, January 16, 2018, regular session. Also approve the minutes, January 16, 2018, wastewater community information meeting. B, approve the contract for ambulance billing and coastal medical, to coastal medical billing. C, approve the request from the Cape Sea Grill to close from February 1, 2018 until February 28, 2018, for renovations and cleaning. D, vote to request special legislation for the purpose of increasing the quota for annual liquor licenses.
Second. Moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion? Go ahead.
So, I'm, sorry, I should have mentioned this earlier, but on the approve the contract for ambulance billing to coastal medical, I just want to note that I'm not in, I'm not in favor of that policy, so I just, I think that it would be nice to be able to go back to a situation where we weren't billing people the ambulance costs. I actually did a little research on that, and I found out that Dennis actually does a similar thing that we started out doing, which was to bill for no more than what Medicare would pay. And so that means if your insurance, you know, would pay 500 or 1,000, and your bill was, you know, 300, you're not going to have an issue. So I'm just noting that, that maybe, maybe we could look at that policy again at some point in time and revise it to go back.
Thank you, Julie. Any other discussion? Don?
I second that thought.
Chris?
We didn't have on the agenda who, what the outfits were that wanted to have the special legislation on the liquor. So just in case people are interested in that, Cape Sea Grill, Ember, and Will Quasit Inn currently have seasonals, and they wanted to have a year-round. So just so we disclose that information.
Thank you, Chris. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Julie, if you send me that, I'll put it on the agenda for further discussion.
Right.
I'd like to announce that we're here.
Jack, I was getting to you. You want to call your meeting to order?
I thought I would.
Go ahead.
We do have a quorum from the Finance Committee, so I call the meeting to order.
Thank you, Jack. Okay, first up tonight, public hearings and presentations, Selectment and Finance Committee, discussion on draft budget and five-year plan, Monomoy Regional School District and Cape Cod Tech. Cape Cod Tech is up first. Welcome.
All right. Well, first, if I could, echo your sentiments from earlier about Jimmy Marsaline. I met Mr. Marsaline twice, but his legend lives very strong on my school committee that I've been associated with for 20 years. And just today, one of my old school committee members, former school committee members, called me to tell me about Jimmy's passing, and I guess in short, there wouldn't be a Cape Cod Tech in 1975, and there wouldn't be opportunity to talk about a new Cape Cod Tech in the 2020s if it weren't for Jimmy Marsaline, so it was a sad day. A great American, too, to lose a great American. The second, I'd like to take a moment, if I could, to thank all the voters for the results in October. It was a long educational process in getting to the vote, but the gratitude I have to the voters for supporting vocational technical education across, across the Cape, in particular tonight in Harwich, was really, really gratifying. As I've said, I've been at the school for 24 years, but it's about what people have been doing for 40, 45 years that I think made that happen, and a lot of, a lot of help from people like yourselves, town officials, and the Cape and Islands delegation, and the voters to make that happen. So a big, huge thank you, and I will give a little bit of update tonight as well.
Great, thank you.
So I'm going to, I'm going to dive in. First is that our Finance Subcommittee has completed their work for the FY19 budget just recently, so I did have to give you some corrective information this evening because of that. We're rushing it out as we get ready for the FY19 season. Our school committee will not vote our budget until February. There'll be a public hearing at our school committee on February 15th at 7 o'clock, 6:30, I should say, the public hearing in the school committee at 7 o'clock. This is, I want to thank my Finance Subcommittee, and I also want to thank those who serve on my school committee from the town of Harwich, was Lee Culver, and I do want you to keep Lee in your, in your thoughts as well, as he battles some health issues, which he's been openly talking about, so we're pulling for Lee. And then Robert Furtado on our school committee, and I want to thank Chris Clark, who sits on my school building committee, Lee again, Paul Funk, who you know from your school building committee, and Bruce Young from the Fire Department, our key members. Bruce, in particular, sits on our Design Development Committee on top of the school building committee, which is double duty, so I want to thank all of those individuals who volunteer their time. The first slide of interest is we've had a relatively steep decline in students this past year, primarily due to a drop in one town, but there are several towns you see going down by between seven and, in the case of Yarmouth, 23 students. So we think we're, we have a pretty small ask for this fiscal year, and I'll go, I'll go deeper into that, but obviously in recognition of a building project and also in recognition of a drop in enrollment. Just a little bit about our MCAS performance. Over 90% of our students pass through advanced or proficient on the MCAS, and you see this is our performance in advanced and proficient versus the state average. We, 55% of our students are either special needs, or excuse me, are high needs, which is a combination of special needs students, ELL students, and students who are economically disadvantaged. And we believe that this performance, the work that our teachers do on a daily basis with these students, is remarkable, when you, especially when you look at some of their scores in their eighth grade, and this is the English Language Arts in the 10th grade. I think this is a fantastic performance, obviously continuously improving. Moving on to math, we have a little more work to do. We're in the 70s and mostly in the 70s percent of students, getting over the bar of advanced and proficient, keeping in mind that needs improvement is still passing and meets the graduation requirement. Very few of our students end up in the failing category and usually pass in the 11th and 12th grade year in mathematics, if that's the case. In science, we're kind of in a limbo with, we have physics, technology, and engineering is our primary test at Cape Cod Tech. We think it speaks to our students. We used to have 100% of the students take biology, and we've been making that transition over several years, although now the state in its infinite wisdom has decided that they may be getting rid of that test, so that may throw us all back into a whole new round of figuring out the science situation at Cape Cod Tech. If that were to happen, we would probably go to introductory physics rather than to return to biology for our students. Our graduation rate has increased the last two years with a 92.9% this, in 2016. Our students with disabilities, you see, we do have an issue there in the last couple of years that we're working on getting those students across the bar to graduation. So we're going to be working on that, but we're happy with two years of improvement after our high watermark in 2013. Every year, we are mandated by the Department of Education to, to do a postgraduate follow-up study one year after graduation. This represents 123 students out of 143 that graduated in 2016, and you see that 50% of those students, nearly over 60 students, ended up employed right out of our, out of school in the technical field that we trained them in. And then 37% chose to go on to further education, which takes many forms. Could be a technical education, a further technical education, it could be a certificate program, it could be a two- or four-year degree granting institution. And then much lower, 8% of those 123 students were employed but not related to what we trained them in. And then small amounts, I think we had four students go into the military, and I think we had one student not in the labor force and two students unemployed. And that was at the time of the, of the survey, one year out after graduation. These are relatively typical results for our graduate follow-up study. The balance between employed in the technical field and in additional education, making up the bulk of it. That percentage differs every year by a little, but this is pretty typical of our graduate follow-up study data. So with regard to enrollment, I've already shared that, but this is just a graphical representation, as Barnstable becomes a higher percentage of our overall enrollment this year at nearly 30%. And Harwich is at, is around, I believe, 10%. Actually, if I go to, 13.1% in the FY19 budget. If I just went to the next slide, I'd be fine. So I highlighted Harwich here, but you can see the enrollment trends over the last several years has been downward. I think that's a, in preparation for the building, we've seen that enrollment has been relatively stable for our district going forward. However, it's also a reflection of a highly competitive education environment that we're in, in our district, in the 12 towns from Provincetown to Mashpee. And our number-one priority is, is addressing our enrollment, is, has been for the last several years, but even more so this year, redoubling our efforts.
Now, Bob, are you going to speak to why Yarmouth dropped?
I'd rather just say that Yarmouth dropped and that we are working on it. We're going to be redoubling our efforts in advertising in that, in the register, which serves the Dennis and Yarmouth area. In some cases, some schools are not as, in allowing for making what our education, making students aware of what our education is. Working with Scott Carpenter in Harwich has always been a very harmonious relationship, and I think students who want to avail themselves of a vocational technical education, or at least explore it, get that opportunity in the town of Harwich. Let's just say in other areas of my district, that's not as, as true. Going down to the FY19 budget, want to share that, first of all, our per pupil spending numbers are relatively high for vocational technical high schools. So one thing, and in recognition of enrollment down, and also that we are expensive as a vocational technical high school to begin with, we've been, I think, asking pretty small asks over really seven years here that you see on the screen, with nothing over 3% except in FY16. And you'll recall, and 16 is when we asked for $250,000 for the stabilization fund. That was in preparation for the feasibility, feasibility study, we've just, that we completed in anticipation of the vote. So that 4.49 was really a two-point-something increase in the operating budget with $250,000 from the, additional from the towns to help fund the feasibility study. And we've had a negative in 17 and two less than 2% asks in the last couple of years. What I'm saying to you is we're working on it, and that we're continuing to, to lower costs where we possibly can. So it's a 1.44% increase to $14,944,000. I'm going to skip over this slide because it applies to non-regional schools. These are costs that we assume that non-regional schools do not assume in their operating budget, but that's not true for Monomoy, so I'm going to skip over that. With regard to what funds this budget, unfortunately, it is primarily funded by the 12 towns. $12,159,000 of that $14,944,000 budget is from assessments to the 12 towns. We, we are anticipating about $2,606,000 in transportation reimbursement and, and Chapter 70 state aid, and we do generate a little bit of revenue, mostly from excess and deficiency, which really isn't revenue, but it is the part of our local revenue that's shown on this slide, and interest income and some facility rental. But other than that, that's, that makes up the $150,000 of local revenue. Looking at the operating budget versus those different sources of revenue, the story is the operating budget has been inching up a little bit over the last several years, I think relatively slowly, but assessments go right with it. State aid has been relatively level. They usually give about $25 to $50 a student, and after that, it falls, the rest falls on the town, except for the local revenue that I shared with you earlier. This is really the numbers and a little history of our budget over the last several years in number form and in a tab, in a table. What's it used for? I'm going to skip the pie chart. This is the pie chart that represents this information right here. So this is the breakdown of the major categories that are in this budget, and that percentage is not an increase, obviously, that's a percentage of the total budget that you're seeing there. Obviously, salaries and benefits make up a large portion of the budget, and I'll share that in another slide, once again adding up to the $14 million. And where are the big increases? As you go into a, you go from more detail to more general detail, salaries going up at 2.79%. We are, FY19 is the third year of a collective bargaining agreement with our teachers, which was a 2.25% increase for pretty much all staff, including all the other units, aides, and food personnel and secretarial personnel and custodia maintenance, all had a 2.25 in this budget. So we're just a little up from that at 2.79%. There are no new positions in this budget, and there are no, there is one cut by attrition of a special needs teacher that is retiring. Benefits are up 2.32%, which, we got some good news from the Cape Cod Municipal Health Group, which we incorporated that 6% increase, but we've also had some migration of people to the lower, or the high deductible plans, and that has provided additional savings as we, we budget our benefits based on the, on the rolls as they are today with the increases that Cape Cod Municipal Health Group has put forth. So only going up 2.3% is a huge win for, for benefits, because that's usually high single digits or double digits. Materials and services is down primarily, that's a catch-all for all the, of all the other categories, but we had $100,000 line item in the budget for the cost of the election, and that comes off the books, so that's the, that's the major part of that. That was a one-time cost, otherwise it's relatively, you know, status quo on that category. We are in the fourth of a fifth year fixed contract with Cape Destinations for Transportation. And we are, it's a 4% increase, and it's, that's due to our homeless transportation that has been increasing over the last couple of years, and also some late transportation increases, but for totaling about $37,000 increase. The big, the big hit will come in a year from now, or maybe two years from now, when we come, when we have to go back out to bid, it's, the, the environment's going to be much different than the, than the past contract. Utilities and heating, we've signed some favorable natural gas and electricity contracts over the last couple of years. That's only going up 1%. Insurance is up about 10%. Most of that is property and liability insurance, and that will increase in the next couple of years, too, because of the building. We're going to have to be carrying more, more insurance when that time comes. Excuse me. In recognition of the building project, we are, we've once again cut our capital budget a bit by $50,000, or negative about 10%. So those are the main areas of the budget that, that went up a total of $212,000 for a 1.44% increase. So the cost of a student per day at Cape Cod Tech, in FY18, it was just under, just over $130 per student per day. It's gone up about $10, and that's primarily driven by the, the drop in enrollment, where it's the cost per student per day, so it's now around just over $140. And what are the cost drivers? Salaries and benefits by far are driving this budget. They, they account for 77.8% of the, of the entire budget and will continue to do so. And I have a slide about how we're addressing OPEB, which is related to health insurance, and I, I'll share that with you. We joined the Plymouth County OPEB Trust a couple of years ago. Aaron Orkut, our business manager, sought that relationship, and I think it was wise. And our most recent audit, $11 million is our unfunded liability in that area, but we are devoting $95,000 in this budget to continue to fund that. Our audit in 2016, which just came out, had a $349,000 balance in our OPEB trust. Today, because of returns, we have over $600,000 in our OPEB trust, and the 95 would go into that in the FY19 cycle. Just wanted to share this for the viewers, and this is the school in 1975, and it looks very similar to that today. And thank you to the voters, this is where we want to go, to provide a 21st century education, vocational technical education to all the students from Provincetown to Mashpee. These did not come out. You have the floor plans, I think you see in front of you, and we have divided them into, into academies, we're calling, around similar themes. Transportation, which would house our auto tech and our auto collision and our marine services programs, closely in proximity to our academic offering, academic classrooms, so that there can be more collaboration between teachers, which we think is essential, more conversations about, about the academic skills that are needed in the technical area, and also making the academic experience a little more hands-on, we hope, as, as a result, so that they both feed each other. In our current configuration, they're very siloed teachers, and we're hoping to create a, a lot of project-based learning and hands-on activities, both in the academic and technical side, where teachers are closer together and have the opportunity to interact. Some key milestones in the, in the project, we're going to be in design development, working with our architect and OPM over the next several months through April, where we'll, that'll be submitted, and the design will be submitted, and then we'll move into construction documents. You see, I threw in here, too, that we will start borrowing, we'll do some temporary borrowing, bond anticipation notes of $7 million in next month, and that's to get through these, this time period of design with our, our construction team. And then construction documents will take until August, bidding will take up until November, and in November of 2018, we plan to probably borrow $75 million. And that's inclusive of the $7 million I just, so the $7 million would be folded in to the $75 million. That's not 82 million, that's 75 total will be borrowed in November of 2018. And then in December of 2018, a notice to proceed if the, if the ground, if the shovels can go in the ground in December, but activity will start in, in early December on our new school. So one thing I want to share about the borrowing, I, I did pass out a sheet that looks like this, and I don't have that for the, for the slides. This is still estimated. We had a meeting in November at our school, all 12 towns were there. There are financial advisors presented several options for borrowing on this project. One thing I want to remind everyone is, when we were, when we were proposing the school and use, the numbers we were utilizing, we were using 5% borrowing, which was conservative. We were talking about $86 million in total being borrowed, but remember that through our Cape and Islands delegation, they accessed another $5.3 million, recognizing the amount of students we have that are economically disadvantaged. And I want to really thank Sarah Peake and Senator Seer for their help on that. So that lowered the amount that the towns will have to finance over most, more than likely 25 years. We did provide 30, 25, and 20 at this meeting. So we're borrowing around 81 million in total if we need to. So what you see here is an estimate of the fiscal 2020 payment. And in the case of Harwich, with the interest from the bond anticipation notes, which is about $110,000 district-wide, for Harwich, that would be a $14,000 payment. We are going to pay that in 18. We're, we're going to pay that in, in November of 18, the interest payment, so that there will be no financial or borrowing hit in fiscal 19 for the, for any of our towns. We will pay that upfront with our, our cash flow, which we believe we can do. And then when we borrow the $75 million, we believe that's going to be about a $616,000 payment right now. This is based on 25 years at 3.75%. So all those things have to hold. We're not near 3.75 yet. I think they're borrowing just around three right now, and if we don't have a lot of rate hikes in between now and November of 18, then we should be good. We, we're going to meet again in September. So the total estimate right now, if the towns, and they seem to be... So, the total, uh, estimate right now, if the towns, and they seem to be, uh, moving towards a twenty-five-year note, um, for the seventy-five million, it'll be around six hundred and thirty-one thousand right now is, is the estimate for twenty-twenty. Keep in mind, not for this budget cycle we're talking about right now. So, and then the assessment is my last slide. For the town of Harwich, uh, although, um, the budget's going up very little and the assessments are going over, up even less, being a status quo for enrollment and our enrollment declining overall, unfortunately, I'm reporting a six percent increase in the assessment, um, for the town of Harwich. And you see the per student, uh, cost for that assessment in the far, that should say eighteen, nineteen. I apologize for that, in the, uh, last two right columns. So, with that, I would, um, entertain any questions that you have.
Thank you, Bob.
Yep.
Start questions with Don.
I don't have any questions on the material. You always do such a good job of, uh, putting it very simply, which I appreciate.
Thank you.
But I do have a question on the design of the building. What is a green roof?
Okay, so, there's the bottom floor in the back. We are, we're building out to the east side, which I think I've shared with this committee before. The bottom floor will have all the high bay shops, your auto shops, your construction shops. So, when you get to the second floor, the roof goes in.
Okay.
Because the shops upstairs are not as big because of, you don't have to have cars and boats in them and things like that.
Right.
So, you have a space. And for lead, we're gonna be a lead silver building, which is leadership in, um, energy and something design.
Okay.
Apologize, but we're gonna be lead silver. And the green roof is contributing to that.
So, solar panels?
Uh, there will be solar panels on the roof, but not there. This will be just, that, you actually get lead points just for, they're gonna be what they call cedum. It's a, it's a.
Yeah, yeah, I know what cedum is.
They're gonna be in trays and they're gonna be on that roof.
Yep.
And, um, so that's, that, that is actually getting us, we have two percentage points for lead, uh, silver for energy efficiency. And that is one of the things that is contributing to it. So, it's a green roof. It's, there's gonna be walkways and there's actually a patio, um, outside our presentation space. Um, we don't have an auditorium, but we have a presentation space and there's a patio that goes out to that green roof, which that picture's probably too small to see it, but.
Yeah, I was trying to zoom in. I couldn't, couldn't see. So, will the horticultural, uh, department take care of that?
Pretty low maintenance. It's gonna be pretty low maintenance. It's not something that grows, uh, very much. It's kind of very low-lying, um, as been described to me. But we might put some spices out there for culinary arts. That's a decision later on.
That's great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, no, thank you. The presentation's very thorough. The only question I do have is if you're able to start in December, hopefully, when, when will it be completed?
Um, two years from then. So, we're talking about December of, um, of twenty-twenty. Now, that doesn't end the project because then we're supposed to move in December of twenty-twenty or January of twenty-twenty-one. I'll believe that when I see it, uh, mid, mid-year. Ever done that, mid-year? Okay. Uh, we gotta figure the logistics of that. But, um, then you have the, you have the whole, still a ton of site work to do. You have to demolish the current facility, build all the parking lots, complete the fields. So, there's still a tremendous amount of work, which I believe is another year and a half after that. Okay?
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Larry?
No further questions.
Thank you, Larry.
I'm gonna turn it over to Jack. I'm just gonna remind you guys you're sharing a mic, so please speak loud if you're gonna speak.
Ed?
No.
Don?
I have no comment, no.
Mark?
No question.
No, I'm good, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
Nice job.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Saving on my question.
Hi, yeah.
Welcome.
I'm not a hundred percent sure this is the one. One way down.
Feels like old.
It's been a lot of time.
Then there was a second one.
All right, this was came in at two o'clock. This is the one I got too.
We condensed it.
Less than fifty signs?
Yeah.
Can I start at the, at the one?
FY nineteen.
Thank you.
All right, sorry, we, uh, we sent a, uh, a shortened presentation to go and spare you, uh, hopefully forty slides off of, uh, off the deck. So, um, in the packet that you received, there's a, there's sort of a complete set that has all sorts of graphs on enrollment, this, that, and the other. But what we'd like to do is just try to streamline it and get to, uh, get to the numbers. And, um, so I wanted to just share with you just some of the good, uh, educational successes that we've been seeing at Monomoy. And it's, uh, it's kind of a testament to money that's been well-spent and a program that has been, uh, making some great headway in the short period of time that the district's been together. Before Monomoy came together, um, both of our towns, Harwich and Chatham, uh, had, uh, had, uh, areas within their curriculum where, uh, where we were struggling. Um, the, uh, the state, uh, using their testing does a, uh, does a score, it's called a growth score. And the way to, uh, interpret this is if you, if your students are having a growth score at fifty or fifty percent, then your students are growing as, at, at least as fast as the state average. Um, and if we look, uh, right before the two towns came together, Harwich was really known for having a high school that had tremendous growth at the high school. Uh, and, and was finishing, you know, the graduates at Harwich High were finishing above the state average. But one of the challenges that Harwich High had is that many of the grade levels in math and English heading up to the high school, we were, you know, we were behind the state, you know, the state average. And there was a lot of catch-up that was happening between eighth and tenth grade. So, if we compare where we were in two thousand, in two thousand and eleven to, uh, where we are today, at the moment, we have, uh, one grade level and one subject area that we are not growing above the state average, at least based on these, this last round of MCAS test. And this is, you know, this is the, uh, uh, eighth grade math. And, uh, math is something that we put in place, a new math curriculum for grades kindergarten through, uh, seventh grade, last year with the support of our two select, uh, boards and finance committees. So, uh, so our hope is that we're gonna see even math now leapfrog above the state average. And I think another way to also interpret what does this mean for our kids? Uh, our kids are growing on average now ten percent more per year in math and English than what they were before this district came together. So, if you think of ten percent growth compounded from kindergarten to twelfth grade, you know, we're talking over a year's worth of academic growth that's now happening in the school district compared to just, you know, a short five years ago. So, you know, so we're, you know, we're seeing some great, you know, some great headway there. Even just, you know, looking at last, you know, last three years, uh, graduation rates at the high school. I know I came before the select board a couple of years ago when there were questions about the graduation rates as the high school was forming. You know, those graduation rates, we've seen leapfrog up over the last, over the last couple of years. In terms of the MCAS results that we're seeing at the high school, again, that growth, that same growth that Harwich High had is still there at, at Monomoy Regional High School. And we're seeing that growth increase year after year for the last three, you know, for the last three years. One of the reasons that, that growth is sort of, has been so important and what we've been focused on is with, uh, the support of our communities. We put in place something that's called the MAP testing, which is measures of academic progress. And from grades kindergarten all the way up to tenth grade, we measure the kids right at the beginning of the year. And it's a computer adaptive test, so the students can take it in about twenty minutes. It zeroes in on what their math levels are, what their reading levels are. We do that mid-year, we do that at the end of the year and really focus on interventions to make sure that each kid is, is having growth, you know, you know, and, and that each classroom is growing above that state average. So, that's a huge focus of ours is to go and see that growth lifted for our students from kindergarten all the way, uh, along their, along their journey at Monomoy. And if we see that growth continue to get elevated, we're gonna see ultimately those, you know, MCAS, you know, the achievement scores on those MCAS tests then leapfrogging up as well. So, that's a, that's been the focus and just wanted to do a quick sharing of some successes that have been happening before we jump into the budget itself. Uh, in terms of the, the budget, um, for those, uh, who may be watching us at, at, at home, we have, you know, we have a budget that has a state aid number that comes in. That state aid number is based on a, on a three-year rolling average of the, uh, of the, uh, foundation budget, which is the number of students that attend public schools, uh, in our two communities. So, that could be attending Monomoy, it could be attending charter schools, or it could be, uh, attending schools through interdistic, interdistrict school choice. So, those are the, those are the areas that we're financially responsible in our budget. So, the, uh, the students that attend Cape Tech, the town gets a separate, uh, assessment for those. So, so that, uh, that minimum required, uh, the states also have a, has, sets a minimum required contribution that each town is supposed to have that has a wealth factor weighted in there. The minimum required contribution also has an enrollment factor that's weighted in there that doesn't have a three-year rolling average on the enrollment factor. It's sort of an instantaneous based on what the enrollment of Harwich students versus Chatham students, uh, would be in the, in each fiscal year. We have been, uh, putting together our budgets over the last several years based on a, uh, strategic plan that the district has where, uh, you know, where we have been focused on specific strategic initiatives. We also, uh, have been developing our budgets around class sizes that we've been maintaining since the district has come together, where our elementary classrooms, we try to keep it an average of eighteen students plus or minus one across the grade levels at elementary school and at nineteen students plus or minus two across the grade levels at middle school. But we also wanna be sensitive to how this budget fits within the wherewithal of our two towns. In terms of the budget assumptions behind this, uh, the projection is that our enrollment's gonna be level. Uh, we have had a pretty stable enrollment within the school district over the last several years. Uh, this is a level-staffed budget. The governor's numbers have come out. There, we are using a level funding of chapter seventy, uh, behind this budget, just to be conservative. The governor's numbers indicate that chapter seventy might go up by about a hundred thousand dollars. Uh, however, we also know that that number has, uh, you know, has the state legislature that it needs to go through. So, we're being conservative with that. There's a minimum required contribution, came out with the governor's numbers. We're presuming that that number's gonna hold. Uh, generally, the minimum contribution doesn't shift very much, but what that ultimate state aid might. Um, we have the same, uh, six percent health insurance, uh, increase has been plugged into this budget. And then we have the three-year rolling averages behind there. Uh, lastly, there's a hundred thousand dollar contribution to OPEB that's in this budget, which is consistent with what we've put in past year's budgets. Our enrollment is sixty-four percent of our students come from Harwich. Twenty-three percent of our enrollment comes from Chatham. And thirteen percent of our students are school choice students into the district. And, as I said, the, uh, the enrollment trends that we've been seeing the last couple of years have been fairly flat. And we, we anticipate that we're gonna see a fairly flat, uh, enrollment, uh, between FY eighteen and FY nineteen. We anticipate that our class sizes, again, as I said, are gonna be, uh, you know, hovering around eighteen at the elementary levels. Uh, at the middle school, we have a, uh, currently a bumper crop of fifth graders that will be rolling up into sixth grade. So, we anticipate, uh, that, you know, that one cohort being a little larger. And, uh, when that cohort reaches the high school here in a couple of years, uh, we'll be seeing the high school really operating at that seven-hundred-student capacity that, uh, that it was built for. So, it's, it's been nice to see that the, uh, the enrollment at the high school continues to tick up and, and reach to, you know, that enrollment level that, uh, that it was initially anticipated would get there. As I said, it's a level-staffed budget. Uh, we have three hundred and forty, eight, point eight, uh, employees. Uh, there'll be some slight shifting, uh, of categories of where some of these employees are. We anticipate the need, uh, the need for two less teachers. Uh, but we do anticipate the need for additional clinical support at the middle school and for, and for a couple of part-time individuals that would sort of shift that, but still have it be level. When it comes to assessments, and we'll, we'll get to the assessment, I know for the finance committee in particular, that's the, uh, that's the big important number for you all. Um, one of the things that greatly impacts the assessment is excess and deficiency. Um, we are using in this budget a rather appreciable amount of excess and deficiency. So, there's eight hundred and seventy thousand dollars that's being put into this budget in excess and deficiency. My hope is that if that governor's number holds, that we can use less reserves to help buffer, you know, to help buffer this, this budget. You know, because the, the eight hundred and seventy is not a number that we'd like to kind of see year after, year after year. Um, we did feel that we could be rather aggressive on the excess and deficiency for one simple reason. We, uh, initially, when Katie and I first came before you and talked about building excess and deficiency, the plan was to build excess and deficiency to a level of four percent over the district's first seven years. Well, uh, the good news is that through, uh, Katie's, uh, fiscal wherewithal, we've been at, we've managed to go and get excess and deficiency to five percent, uh, within the first five years. So, we've had some capacity there to help buffer the budgets for our towns, for the assessment for our towns, uh, in this fiscal year. Uh, school choice, largely, we're using the, uh, the school choice that's coming in, in the budget. We are using to help offset and defray some of the costs there. Circuit breaker, circuit breaker is, uh, funds that the district gets for, uh, students that, uh, that have, uh, profound special needs. If there's a, uh, to cover some of the costs, uh, above and beyond a state threshold. Uh, so, we again are offsetting the amount of circuit breaker we anticipate to come in. We're using in the budget for, for next year. In terms of the big contractual, uh, drivers here, uh, our contractually obligated drivers are really responsible for eighty-four percent of the budget increase. Uh, the big ones there is just the, you know, just what we anticipate steps, lanes, uh, and our employee costs, including health insurance to be. And then we get into, uh, strategic initiatives that are in the budget to help move us along the lines of implementing that strategic plan. Uh, one of the things that we'll see in this budget for next year is, uh, at the high school level, uh, we have, uh, been shifting this year and for the next three years away from a, we'll call it a more traditional woodshop model of tech ed into a more high-tech, uh, robotics, uh, programming, type of, uh, you know, type of, uh, tech ed at the high school. So, uh, so to, uh, sort of shift into the type of, uh, robotics equipment, parts and pieces that the students are gonna need, there's gonna be a, uh, a, there's a nineteen thousand dollars worth of curriculum items, you know, teaching supplies that's needed to head that direction. Uh, one of the other things that we want to do and are doing in this budget is, uh, I mentioned that last year, we implemented a new math curriculum, uh, from kindergarten through grade seven. The elementary school's in need of a new reading curriculum. So, we would be implementing, this would be year one of a three-year, uh, cost for a reading curriculum at the elementary school. There's also a lot of, uh, a, a lot of discussion these days about social emotional, uh, needs of students. So, there. So there are funds within this budget to have some social emotional curriculum put in place for, across the grade levels. And then at the middle school, I want to see us have some more STEM teaching materials, but also to see the middle school start to really take some leaps and bounds when it comes to video education. And we've seen some great things happening at the high school with regard to the video program, but to see us get some equipment and in place at the middle school to see that start to leap forward. Other strategic improvements that are in this budget. One is to, at the school committee level, we have been talking about our three-year strategic plan is sunsetting at the end of this school year and to work with a consulting firm to, to develop the next strategic plan to look towards the next three, four years for our school district. We've been talking about a, having a, some funds available for a part-time community engagement coordinator to, to help the district with volunteerism, you know, bring more retirees into the system, but also to get the word of Montomoy out to our communities. We have seen the athletic program really flourish and we're having some great successes there. But we also have an athletic director that's spread between a high school and middle school and needs some clerical support. She currently doesn't have clerical support, but sees some clerical support to see us be able to make sure that our program continues to have all the needs met for all of the students. One of the things that we hope to be able to, to do within this budget that becomes sort of cost neutral, if, if we can make it happen, but we, we want to see if we can potentially bring a couple of students that are in expensive out-of-district placements back in. So, you know, so there may be the potential there that, that if we could bring in, bring back in a couple of students to add a staff person to meet those specific students' needs, again, save, you know, ultimately saving money long-term, but trying to see if we can work with families to bring back some, some students. I mentioned at the middle school, the need for some additional clinical support. And then the last thing that I'll come back to at the end of my presentation is to start a stabilization account in the budget, in the budget. So this budget has a fifty thousand dollars allocated to earmark to put into a stabilization account. Currently, the district doesn't have a stabilization account and we'll talk about what that is and how a district goes about forming a stabilization account and why.
I don't know why it's.
When we, we vote the budget, we vote, vote the budget by cost centers, the one thousands, two thousands as outlined by the Department of Ed. And this is a one-page summary, one slide summary, but you also receive the detailed line item of the FY nineteen budget that is broken down by location and with more detail behind. So there's a lot of backup to this.
So it's a thirty-nine million, nine hundred and eight thousand dollar budget. Within the budget is also a capital maintenance technology plan. So the, in here, we have everything from just continuing to do some minor upgrades at Chatham Elementary School and Harwich Elementary School with a major focus at the elementary levels this next year of upgrading the infrastructure. One of the things that is shifting in all schools in Massachusetts is the state testing is now shifting towards being all done on computers. So to have the state testing be done on computers, we have to have the computers there, but more importantly, those computers all need to be connected to a Wi-Fi system that's robust enough to have, you know, all the students on the Wi-Fi at the same time. So we need to upgrade the internet at both elementary schools. We had previously done that last year in the budget at, at the middle school. At the high school, there is, I think the big ticket item and the biggest thing in the budget is to look at the concession stand restroom facility at the stadium field and to do the center portion of that. The, the building that is currently up at the field has been done completely by parent volunteers have come in to, to erect the facility and to flesh it out. But in speaking with, with the boosters club, we felt that, that to actually do the bathroom portion of that building is something that, that parent volunteers alone and the boosters club ability to fundraise is sort of above and beyond their capacity. It would make more sense to, to have us transparently put that into a budget for our towns. So, so you have a, an item there. So last year, our big ticket item in the budget was upgrading the cafeteria at Harwich Elementary School. This year, it's at the high school. There's also a, a set of Chromebooks that happens in each year of the high school that we have to upgrade and refresh, the same at the middle school. So in terms of, in terms of budget, salaries and wages makes up fifty-three percent of the, of the budget with, with the other things like the, the teaching supplies and things like that. The expense is thirteen percent and that capital, that's six and a half. The budget increase over prior years, the budget, overall budget is a four-point-seven percent increase over the prior years with that biggest increase happening, at least percentage-wise, happening at the, at the capital level because our capital budget is level, is leveled, but we have that fifty thousand dollars of stabilization. That's a new, a new budget item in this. So, so to differentiate while the, you know, while the budget's going up by four-point-seven percent, the assessment gets impacted differently. So, you know, so how much of the reserves that the district is using in any particular year can help dampen, can help dampen the assessment? The assessment also is impacted heavily by the minimum required contribution that, that the state, you know, that the state sets, which is, you know, which is partly related to wealth factors in communities, but also partly related to the instantaneous number of children that are attending from, from each town. So, so some of our assessment drivers here in this budget is the minimum required contribution for Harwich has gone up appreciably relative to Chatham. So that Harwich is seeing a four hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollar increase in that minimum required contribution. So how this breaks out in terms of the overall budget? So this, so this would be the budget with, you know, with the six percent health insurance, with the fifty thousand for stabilization, a hundred thousand dollars for OPEB, and the minimum required contributions as set by the state. The thirty-nine million dollar, nine hundred, thirty-nine million, nine hundred and eight thousand dollar budget becomes a, an assessment for Harwich of twenty-five million, seven hundred and forty-eight thousand, five hundred and two dollars, which is a increase in Harwich's assessment by three-point-nine-nine percent over the prior year. And as I mentioned, in this budget, there's fifty thousand dollars for stabilization. So, so what is stabilization? The, the district has an excess and deficiency account that excess funds at the end of a school year roll in, you know, roll into. And as I said, that has been growing and, and we're using that to help defray the cost of this budget. What we, what we have the ability to do at regional school district is to create a stabilization fund, which is something that first needs to get voted on and approved by our school committee, but then would have to come before the selectmen in each town to be voted upon to allow the school district to create a stabilization fund. And then once created, it would have to have monies budgeted and put into a line to fund that account. The concept behind a stabilization fund is one that, that the district can use to, to put away reserve money to pay for items that you would, that you would potentially borrow for, capital projects. Or for, you know, I think the way to look at it is if we're in the middle of a fiscal year and there's a rooftop unit on the top of Harwich Elementary School that, you know, that dies that we weren't anticipating would die and it has a big cost, that you can tap into that stabilization account. Or another way to look at it, if we're thinking long-term on the stabilization account, we've talked at the school district level of having that, having our capital technology line each year. If there are funds unexpended at the end of each year, moving forward to start rolling those funds into this account at the end of a fiscal year. And then if we look forward, we've talked about the, you know, the five-year plan for the district has, has HVAC systems that we know, or sorry, rooftops, roofs that we know that we're going to have to replace it at some time. And that if we're looking out five or ten years and have a roof on a building that needs to get replaced, that hopefully we can tap into that stabilization account and help buffer the cost of a roof project or some other big, you know, big expenditure for our two towns. So in order, as I said, in order for that stabilization account to actually happen, I anticipate at an upcoming school committee meeting that they will have a vote to, to create that stabilization account. And then I would be coming to this board, asking to be put on the agenda to have a vote by this board to create a stabilization account and having to go to Chatham for the same thing. And if all three boards were to vote, then we could actually affect the fifty thousand dollars that's in this budget proposal to be earmarked to go into that account. I don't know if you want to.
When, when I first came to the district, we were looking at doing the five-year plan and I remember thinking, you know, what is Montomoy really going to look like? And it's really interesting to see now that we have the five years behind us and looking, projecting out five years ahead. As a collective group, I think it was a group effort, we did a pretty good job targeting where we thought we were going to be and then actually where we came in. So this, looking back, we see that we actually came in a little bit lower than what we had projected for some of the years going through. And one of the increases you can see in FY fifteen, sixteen is when the debt came on. So that was the impact for the five-year plan. So then we took the same plan and looked ahead to say, and that's just really taking everything that we know as of today and, and moving it forward. We do know the borrowing, so those numbers are pretty solid except for the small balance that we still need to pay for. But otherwise, we've, we've bonded twenty-eight million dollars, which is less than what we had anticipated. And then just taking, making some assumptions about school choice and circuit breaker reimbursements going forward. And that's what we're looking, projecting out for twenty-twenty-four. And just like the one-page summary, behind this is a whole lot of information that rolls up into this one sheet.
So I think that's it for the budget presentation. I know that the board also wants to talk about the regional agreement, but I think we can maybe talk budget first and then come back and talk regional agreement.
Thank you very much. Let's start questions tonight on this one with the finance committee. Jack?
Thank you. Ed, any questions?
Not right now.
No, Mark, John?
No, it's time for me.
I'll just throw out the big one. The Board of Selectmen put out a budget message asking for a two percent increase. Have you looked at what impact that would have on your budget?
You know, we, I, I think if we were to be with a two percent increase and, and if we, I guess we haven't, we haven't looked what it would, what two percent would look like prior to shifting the, from health insurance from where, where we were anticipating. Just a little over a week ago, we were anticipating it to be at fifteen percent. It came in at six. The fifteen percent health insurance was, was essentially a two percent on our budget without doing anything else. And so, you know, the, the difference, it would be a pretty appreciable shift in terms of the program.
But you haven't looked at it.
We, we have not gone into say what, what that would look like.
I have more, but I'll save them for. No, we're good. I, I guess one other one, I'll just, I want to hear more about the creation of the stabilization fund. I just know as we were growing the excess and deficiency accounts, the town side was really suffering during that point with people not getting raises and those kind of things as we grew those numbers. And we cautioned about growing that too fast and it looks like it has happened. And I would hate to see the same sort of thing. We were starving one side to increase savings accounts on the other side. I mean, if we have programs that we have to fund and things we have to do, we spend it. But if we're just growing to add to savings accounts, that's a little different, in my view.
One of the things that was essential in growing an excess and deficiency account was when we were going for our bonding and, and the bond council was really looking to the district on what the plan was and how, you know, to get our bond rating and how we would do that. And then we also had two unexpected windfalls, if you could call it. One year at the very end of the fiscal year, the district received additional charter school reimbursements from the governor that came in, in June, that impacted E and D one year. And then last year, there was an increase in the chapter seventy money beyond what we had budgeted for. So sometimes things outside of our control that have a very positive impact, impact that E and D as well.
I understand. That's it for now.
A couple, a couple of things. Capitals, major expenditures, and have you put together a capital plan? That is, I don't want, I won't say it badly, but more complete, maybe than we had in the past?
Yeah.
We do. We have, working with our facilities director, Rick Travers, we've gone in and I can certainly provide that to Chris and we have it, I think, going to twenty-twenty-four. That's of course barring any unforeseen circumstances that come along, but we do have that planned. And then what we've also been doing is really doing a lot of preventive maintenance on the buildings. And I feel that the buildings that are, are really in, getting in better and better shape each month.
The same way the capital in the presentation was spelled out here, the different projects that are going on this year, our facilities director has outlined what projects we anticipate happening each year heading, you know, heading off into the district, into the future. And our technology director has also done the same thing in terms of anticipating what are the technology needs as we go forward.
Could you shoot those over to us?
Certainly, with the best way to go through.
I applaud stabilization effort and the OPEB effort. At the same time, I guess I'd, I like to be a little more aggressive, but that data might give me a hard time. I think the reality is we've got to stock up away a reasonable amount of funds and pay down a reasonable amount of OPEB long-term effort. And I think that's a judgment call that we can opine about. But, you know, you're the ones that got it, our team there are responsible. And my view is a little, the more money the bank has always better and a little less. So, you know, that's good. I think the, the size of the E and D, eight hundred and seventy thousand dollars kind of set you back a little bit and you're going to try and fly your way back to a reasonable number. When do you see that happening?
Well, I, I guess, I, I guess, and I was sort of talking with Chris before the meeting. My, my hope is that the eight hundred and seventy can be less. You know, so I, I had mentioned that we, we are going in this budget, you know, we have a level fund of the, of chapter seventy. If, if it does in fact come true and the governor's number comes in a hundred thousand dollars more, then eight hundred and seventy can go down to seven hundred and seventy thousand. You know, so there's, so the, the hope is if we, if we have savings So there's, so the, the hope is if we, if we have savings that are, you know, that are realized as we get closer and closer to town meet, meeting and budget certainty, that the amount of that reserve that we're using, we can have less used so that there's more of that reserve to help smooth things out for our two towns in future fiscal years.
Since we can't depend on the governor, uh, your question really becomes one of, can we get this down over the next three or four years realistically, from a planning point of view and from a actual spending point of view? Or is that a pipe dream?
Well, I, I, my hope is that we can get it down. I, I think that we've, I, I think the same way that it's, you know, that it got up there, that I think Katie and I have managed to, uh, managed to make some sound fiscal decisions along with the, the finance subcommittee and the school committee to, uh, to help kind of guide this, you know, guide this in. And, uh, you know, so my, my hope is that, that there's still some conservative enough numbers behind the budget to be able to shrink that, uh, you know, that, you know, that amount as we, as we get closer and closer to budget certainty.
And one of the things that impacts, uh, the budget and the assessment especially is the minimum contribution requirement. So even if, if we came in and we did nothing different in FY19 from FY18, Howard's assessment would go up by over $450,000 just based on the required minimum contribution. So that's another, um, thing to take into consideration.
Just on that minimum contribution, I mean, we're, we're over by a substantial amount. I mean, it's not like we're close to the state's recommended number, right? I mean, it's $12 million versus $23 million.
As, and Howard and Chatham both were...
Right.
Before.
You mentioned in passing, um, computers and the need for upgrades and on and on and on. Hadn't you mentioned that for us a little bit?
So, one of the things, I, I guess I spoke, I, I spoke about the elementary schools and, and how the state has shifted to state testing that's happening. Now, with all of these MCAS tests happening at, on computers, starting in elementary school. Last year, again, with the support of our towns, uh, we came, uh, before you with, uh, with a proposal in the budget to equip every middle school student with a Chromebook. So, that has rolled out this year. I mean, it's, it's just fantastic to see the students using. You can walk into any classroom, they've got their Chromebooks open. And, uh, you know, so we have Chromebooks that all middle school students are using and we have Chromebooks that now, that, that every high school student has been using since the, you know, since the new building opened. The, uh, yeah, clearly the middle school Chromebooks are new and don't need the, uh, don't need to be refreshed yet. The high school Chromebooks, we have on a cycle so that essentially a cohort's worth of students each year have, uh, you know, have new Chromebooks issued to them and, and largely keep their Chromebooks, uh, for, you know, for the time that they're there. But, uh, but it's a, a constant cycling of the, you know, of those. But the, the ability of those Chromebooks to, uh, to enhance, you know, students' learning. And, uh, I, I'm just amazed with the Google Classroom and how the, uh, you know, how the students and teachers are, you know, are using the, uh, the technology and it's, I mean, it's, it happens across the curriculum. My, my daughter just, uh, you know, just a couple nights ago was, yeah, was shooting me something from her Chromebook, uh, that she was working on in her gym class or, you know? And, you know, it's like yoga poses and stretching, this and that, and, you know, and a little research project. And so it's, so we're finding the, you know, the, the teachers using these things to really write across the curriculum. So it's, it's, uh, it's not, uh, not the, uh, type of, uh, learning that, uh, you know, that I think any of us experienced, uh, back, uh, back in the day. But it's really, I think, the, uh, a learning experience that's preparing our students for what their futures really hold.
And from, uh, the infrastructure standpoint that Superintendent mentioned, it, um, a couple of summers ago, we upgraded the wireless infrastructure at the middle school, which now is able to handle the Chromebooks. And with the support of E-rate funding that funds schools and libraries, improvement of their infrastructure. And we're looking at, um, about a 50% reimbursement rate from E-rate for the, um, upgrade of the infrastructure at Howard Elementary and Chatham Elementary. And both of those schools will be positioned to, um, you know, a, able to accept, make it a little less, um, problematic when you have a whole school using technology at the same time. So, um, it, it's, those are exciting and that, that will be done, um, this summer.
Okay, further?
Good, thank you.
Larry?
Okay, I'm not using my computer for stretching exercises. To, uh, to follow the theme on, uh, E and D and stabilization and that we've been discussing, I guess we all have opinions on that. I agree with, I think, Drexon Daniel's going. We keep hoping that you'll come closer to our budget message, closer to 2.5%. I appreciate you working hard on it. Had you thought about moving the, uh, some of the E and D into stabilization rather than into the general budget to, to help in that regard? There was lower your budget, move some in so you create, you know, a stronger stabilization package.
Well, I, I, at least my, my understanding on how I think it has to, has to get operated, or that, that to put money into stabilization, we have to budget it in, you know, tangibly budget it into, you know, FY19 or, or some budget.
So you have to budget the next year to do that.
Right. And, you know, so, but we don't know what next year's excess and deficiency is going to be yet. Yes, so, yes, I, I think it's one of those, you have to say, okay, we're gonna put $50,000 in and, and, and fund it. And then I think we could, uh, you know, have, uh, you know, have sort of our practice that I had mentioned, that at the end of a fiscal year, if there are unexpended funds within the capital line, roll those into that, you know, add that to the, to the stabilization account, since ultimately it's, it, it's funds that would be used for, you know, for capital. And then potentially, you know, potentially decrease the amount that you put in the following year based on the amount that you're rolling over.
Because it must worry you to use some of the E and D funds, uh, for operating expenses. And so it's a more one-term, and we've gone through that cycle in town and without, wasn't pleasant. In terms of the bathroom facilities, is a booster, are you, is that paying 103K? Is that 100% of that or is, or is the booster still contributing to that or?
So...
You know, this was a big discussion when you built, when we built, as you recall.
So, so the boosters, the boosters will still be working to complete and outfit the rest of the facility. So, and I'll, I'll, I'll leave it to Ed, uh, you know, maybe, but, um, but my understanding is the, the boosters will, will be, you know, there's, uh, I mean, it, it was, it was really nice this, uh, you know, particularly this football season to, you know, to see parents selling, uh, you know, selling, uh, concessions out of the world's largest concession shed. But, uh, you know, but unfortunately, all the guests that were coming to, you know, football games or any other sporting event at the track are still using porta-potties. You know, so there's still a lot of work that needs to happen to, to sort of flesh out the inside of, you know, the inside of the building and make it a food service area. But I, I think a lot of that material, the boosters have, uh, have secured, um, you know, have secured, it's just the, the nature of everything that's involved when it comes to a multi-stall bathroom facility that the state requires is not something that...
So this is a percent of the overall cost of what you're...
Right.
And, and keep in mind that there's still, the boosters still have an active fundraising going on for the concession stand that, for those listening at home.
Ed wants to, I got one more question back here.
Yeah. As sort of the author of the idea of building the concession stand, bathrooms, uh, storage area on a volunteer basis, um, as we got into it, the problem comes is, as volunteers, how do you pull permits? And, uh, we found in terms of building, pulling the building permit, because we had, uh, the town, town engineer has the build, has the certifications to build the building permit. And he as an individual, uh, because he's, his insurance is covered by the town to cover the volunteers. And, uh, for pulling an electrical permit, interestingly enough, Scott Carpenter, as the owner's representative, can pull the electric permit because there's no particular requirement on that. The electrical inspector will inspect it and make sure that all the work's done to code by a, a variety of volunteers, but it's not, uh, when we came down to trying to find a plumber to take out the permit, he becomes responsible for any of the volunteers who are working on the plumber, un, under him. And that just became an untenable position. And there is no give in the state, uh, plumbing and building codes to allow it, the, uh, permit to be taken out in any other way. And, uh, quite honestly, we have a lot of good-hearted people in the plumbing industry in this town, but nobody really wanted to put their personal, uh, insurance policy up, up for grabs on, on a volunteer project.
I think...
And it's, you know, it, we all think of the days of, you know, community barn raising and stuff like that. Well, we've gone far past that.
I think another thing, just to, just to point out, um, and it's sort of, at times the delicate place you find yourself in is, as, as the superintendent want to support a lot of different wants out there. The boosters, uh, and I, you know, they are a very involved, it's, it's, you know, one of my most actively involved parent groups, a big parent group out there, wants to see, you know, their, you know, their children, you know, whatever the sport is at the, yeah, that are using our stadium field, have some bathroom facilities and, you know, get away from the porta-potties at, at the high school. And, uh, and came to me asking, uh, very aggressively asking if, uh, if I would have this be part of the construction project. And I, you know, pushed back and said, look, uh, I, I understand, you know, the urgency here. But, uh, but my understanding is that those that were here before me made promises to our two towns that, you know, that the bathrooms wouldn't be part of the construction project. And I said, I said, I, you know, so I, I would feel uncomfortable as the superintendent and, and Katie, you know, Katie would say the same thing to, to have it show up there. Even though the, you know, the building project has come in, you know, significantly under what, you know, what folks thought about, that, uh, that if we put it in as part of a budget and we're very transparent, that, you know, that here it's, it's in the budget, that, you know, that has complete transparency. It's not the superintendent sort of, you know, back-dooring something and, uh, and having bathrooms. So, yeah, so, you know, they're there, we're talking about them.
Uh, could you briefly, uh, put the robotic, uh, tech program in context for me? Was, that, I assume that's part of a big or something?
So, so I guess, you know, I guess where we would like to see things going. And I don't know if, uh, if people on the committee are familiar with US First, but US First Robotics is a, a national robotics competition and program where, you know, where students both are intimately involved in building all of the systems, you know, everything from the, uh, you know, the drive train to being able to pick up objects. But there's also a tremendous amount of programming that's involved because, uh, you know, technology these days is running autonomously, it's using sensors. So, uh, so a lot of this is to get the materials that students can then work on to learn how to build systems and then learn how to program the systems. You know, so it's, it's a, it's a mind shift, shift from woodshop to a, you know, sort of a, a, a design of, of high-tech things that, uh, we hope to have happen out there. And, uh, if, uh, if Bob's still around, uh, we might even reach out and do some collaboration with, uh, that other high school in Harwich.
Thank you.
Julie?
So first of all, thank you. It's a lot of, um, very useful information. I know it's a lot of work, um, but I'm trying to understand between the trends on page seven? School choice, sorry, page nine. When we look at those numbers and the overall, um, trend seems to be fairly consistent on, on page five, district enrollment trend, and then the blue being choice, whether that be choicing out or going to charter, right? So, then my only question is, um, we get to what has to go out? Tuitions out on page 10. And it talks about the school choice tuitions and the charter school tuitions. And so I'm assuming I know the answer to this, but I, I'm, I'm also asking it to be clear. The number, even though everything seems pretty consistent in terms of, of the trends, the numbers are climbing and climbing for 18 and 19. Now at 1287, 193 in 2018, this is school choice tuitions. And then pro, projected for 1287, 193 again for FY19. Same thing on the charter school tuitions that have gone up significantly since FY 2013, at 707,868 up to 1.218017. So, my first question is, is there any type of limit that we at towns can put on what they'll pay out to a charter school? Or does the state continuously expect us, as they continue to fund the schools, that we're just gonna keep paying out all this money? What is the average we pay out now?
So it, it, the, the amount that you pay out to a charter school is based on the per pupil expenditure. So, you know, so, you know, the higher our per pupil expenditure, the higher that outflow is. So it's, um, whereas, uh, school choice, you know, school choice tuitions, uh, are $5,000 plus if the student has any special needs, there's a slight incremental cost on, on there. One of the other things that, that I have had to very consciously do with our district is try to bring school choice into check. We, uh, we had, uh, we had been cruising along and, and, you know, Harwich, Harwich Public had, uh, taken in a very large number of school choice students. The challenge was that if we, if we continued to take in school choice students at that rate and if we were really successful at Montomoy and s, and families started to stay with us, which is what we're seeing, that we would be coming before you saying, okay, well, we've now overfilled a high school built for 700. So, so what we've tried to do over the last several years is get the number of students that are coming into the district equal to the number of students that are flowing out. So that, because the high school is built to, you know, to accommodate our foundation enrollment. And we've done a really good job of bringing that in check. And, you know, so that we'll, we'll see that high school be at capacity here in the next couple of years. But we're also seeing the, the students coming in and out to, you know, to sort of align. You know, the challenge is for everyone that, uh, that comes in for school choice, if they're, you know, if it's offsetting somebody going out to a charter school, that's three times what's coming in.
So I guess that's my question too, though, so, and I'm just throwing this out there. If, if Howard spends, you know, $14,000 per student and a charter school spends 20, w, we have no say in that?
Well, it's, they would only get our per pupil.
Okay.
Yeah, so they, they don't get...
They wouldn't get the full, okay. So, I mean, I think that's such a drain on our, our system and where we've got this wonderful, beautiful new school. So there's that. And also in terms of the computers at the elementary school, what, what is that? The new test that they've introduced that's, um, for the kids, that it's no longer MCAS?
Well, actually, it, they, uh...
Going back.
Yeah, so, so the state, the state had been looking at a national exam called the Park Exam. And, uh, voted a year, a little over a year ago to, uh, to develop their own assessment. You know, so, MCAS 2.0. So, so we, you know, we've now shifted from a computerized park test to a, a new computerized MCAS test.
Okay, so they're still moving forward with putting the young kids on the computer?
Right. Right.
Which is why it's important with the infrastructure upgrade, yeah.
No, and I understand that, but I also understand the difficulty in, you know, a lot of kids are very tech savvy, but some of them aren't. And so then you've got this learning curve and extra time and money.
And it's, it becomes important then to embed using Chromebooks in the lessons that are happening at the elementary school. While we're not outfitting every elementary student with a Chromebook, we need to make sure that their first experience with a Chromebook is not when they're taking the state assessment.
Right, right. And Aspen, in terms of, what is the cost of Aspen? Do you know offhand? Is every school using Aspen?
Well, every, every school needs to use some sort of student information database. And ours just happens to be a product called Aspen. But, but every system needs to have that, that system because every system is required to export a lot of data to the state each year. And so that's the system we have to warehouse all the information that ultimately produces report cards, but also sends all the required reports out to the state.
The cost is, I'm going to say it's between twelve and seventeen thousand dollars. I could get that to Chris tomorrow. I just didn't bring the detail behind everything.
Thank you. And, and, you know, as far as the Booster Club goes and concession stand, I think it's been a wonderful, you know, hard community effort. I think there's been a lot of volunteerism. I think there's been a lot of fundraising, and I think the community has been incredibly supportive. But I do think there are limitations as to what we can expect volunteers to do. So I think we've reached that point, and I appreciate, you know, trying to be forthright. We also, but it's been, you know, geez, I think I got involved in that in like two thousand and fifteen, right? So, I think we've gone long enough with trying to get it done. We should be able to-
Just one, once we get sort of over this hump with getting the plumbing to catch up with, there's still a lot of work that volunteers will be able to do finishing hanging drywall and all of those sorts of things.
Yeah, and I think we've had so, a lot of support. So, I'd love to see it get done because I think at some point we need to just be done with it, you know, so. Thank you.
Janelle?
Okay, I have a few questions. I'm a little confused by a couple of things. So, when we look at the enrollment, we've got sixty-four percent Harwich, twenty-three percent Chatham, and thirteen percent choice. But yet, the assessments are seventy-three to seventy-four percent Harwich and twenty-five to twenty-six percent Chatham.
You can't include the school choice in the assessment numbers.
So, how come Harwich absorbs so much more than Chatham? Chatham's actually only getting like two percent, and we're getting ten.
It's based on a three-year rolling average, the assessment sheet. And unfortunately, we had it in last year's PowerPoint. We don't have it here. Again, I could send that to Chris and it will show you.
I have it.
Okay, so it's based, it's based on the enrollment, of the foundation enrollment of the number of Harwich children and the number of Chatham children. And then just on the three-year rolling average, that's why the percentage changes like that.
Yeah, it's, also that pie chart that shows Harwich, Chatham, and Choice is, is who's enrolled in the district, not, not the families that are making up the foundation enrollment. So, you know, so if there's a disproportionate number of Harwich families that are choicing out to either a charter school or to another school district, it's going to impact that number a little differentially too.
You mean like if the, maybe the initial seventy percent has gone down to sixty percent? It's because, what you're saying is Harwich, more Harwich families are choicing out? Is that what you're saying?
So, yeah, so it's, so, so the, the three-year rolling average is not based on the number of students that are attending Monomoy, but the number of students that are attending a public school other than the Cape Tech. That's your, that's what the foundation enrollment is because those are the students that we're financially responsible for. So, so the tuition to another school district or the tuition to a charter school comes out of our budget end. So, so that's, so, so that's what that number, you know, what that pie chart would look like.
And then, another question I have on the budget. So, looking at the revised draft budget, page one, and going through like district leadership and administration, salaries and wages, and leadership and administration expenses, yada, yada. I'm confused because on one of the pages here, the full-time employees stayed the same between eighteen and nineteen on the graph, but yet, like, instruction salaries and wages is up by nine-hundred-and-fifty-three thousand dollars. And administration, leadership and expenses, fifty-eight thousand. Other schools' service expenses, which I assume may have been the middle school, you were looking at, talking about another counselor, sixty-seven. So, I'm a little confused how the, the full-time employees can stay the same, but yet, the expenses go up so drastically.
Well, we have lane changes, the contractual obligations, lane changes, contract, the colas, steps.
And that all adds up to that much money? Wow. And also on this first page, fixed charges went up by four-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollars. What are those?
Predominantly, that's where the health insurance is the biggest driving force there.
Okay.
There are other insurances that are not health insurance, but primarily it's the health insurance liability, dental, et cetera.
And then the programs with other school districts, three hundred thousand, it went up?
So, those are our audit district tuitions, whether it's special ed, school choice, or charter schools out.
And that's going up by three hundred thousand dollars because you're anticipating more people leaving or the charter school charging more?
A combination, and then also, we were looking at using a little less circuit breaker money to offset a district tuition.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, and then the gym floor at the Harwich Elementary School, wasn't that just done like a couple of years ago?
Well, every couple of years because those gyms are used so often. We need to, we don't need to do it to the level that we did it before, but you have to kind of buff it and re, you know, resurface it so that it doesn't ever get worn down till it gets to the paint where the basketball courts aligned.
Okay. And one last. So, for Christmas this year, my daughter asked for a laptop, and I know a lot, she's in sixth grade. A lot of her friends have their own computers. I've heard other high school student parents say that they all have their own computers that they use and the Chromebooks that they are assigned sit in their bedroom and never get used. What do you think about that? Have you, have you seen the trend that typically Monomoy, the majority of Monomoy students have their own computers or would even prefer, you know, maybe they're an Apple family, or they just want their own computer. Like, for instance, my daughter's in sixth grade, she's not allowed to bring the Chromebook home. So, she said, "I really would like a laptop for Christmas so I can bring it to school and I can bring it back and use that," you know. So, what do you think about that?
Well, I think most are still using the Chromebooks. So, if I go in to see a high school class or, you know, you'll, I would say in any given classroom, there might be two students that are using a computer of their own choice. I think what's, what's challenging potentially when that happens is that you have all sorts of different technologies and trying to make sure that all the students have all the programs that they needed, need loaded onto it. Whereas Chromebooks, they, you know, they're all using the same type of Chromebook. There's the same, if the, if the computers, if their Chromebook battery's dead, there's one thing in the classroom that they can go plug in. You know, there's a common plug, you know, that it's having. And the Chromebooks automatically update. So, you know, so every time that Chromebook gets opened, if there's something that needs to be updated, it updates itself. So, it, it's, it is, for school districts, I think it's a, it's a logistically easy technology to sort of continually maintain. But I, you know, but I understand where you're coming from. I just think that it's the minority of students that are bringing them in. I think the other thing that we have to be sensitive to with our school district too is thirty percent of our students are socio-economically disadvantaged. And I think that's something that, I think a number of folks in the community don't realize how big that number is for our two communities. I think we, you know, we're blessed with so many natural, you know, natural wealths, let's say, and, and people come down and have some, you know, some rather large vacation homes here. But, you know, but the folks that are here year-round, there's a number that, you know, that really need the school district to provide that technology. And by providing the Chromebook for every student, it really helps level the playing field for all the kids.
That's it for me.
I can tell you to, to that point, my, my kids use their Chromebooks the entire four years. And actually, one of them chose a Chromebook going to college because she was so familiar with it. I also think that the support is there too. So, if you, everybody has different computers, you don't have a centralized person to go to when you need some help with it.
Well, you can buy Chromebooks on your own.
No, but I'm saying that you have that person there and the school is providing it. And so, to his, to Scott's point, is updates and such that everybody can go. And if they're having difficulty, they all know what, what thing, what software program they're working on or should have or kinks in the system. So, I, my kids found that it worked well for years.
And I have two that are using them, and, you know, I've, I've offered to, you know, do you want a computer? They, they love the Chromebook, you know, so it's, and I think it's, it's nice having one technology. Teenagers sometimes aren't exactly good to the Chromebook and maybe even the superintendent's own child managed to break a screen. And, you know, and we, because it's one thing, they can take their Chromebook. There's a check the superintendent and the other parent would, you know, would, you know, you know, fill out to go pay for that new screen. But, but we can get the student up and running with a new device because, I mean, their homework's on that, their ability to access their grades. It's all, you know, it's all tied in seamlessly, so it's, it's, it's nice. Okay, moving on. Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm going to start with a couple of minutia points because I wasn't here for the last four years. Just briefly, Scott, your graduation rates, they're based on what? I know somebody gets a diploma, that's, that's the number that got the diploma, but against what kind of base?
So, it's, it's, the state, the state these days is moving towards a four-year, these are four-year graduation rates. So, it's the number of students in a cohort that, that finish within four years is what that, you know, is what that number represents. So, at any given time, there are some students who, by virtue of special needs, may end their journey with a certificate of attainment, you know, that they've, they, they never, they never get a diploma because in large part they might not be able to pass an MCAS exam. But, and then there is a few students who, who, you know, who take five years that would count against that. And then you have kids who have dropped out along the lines that would count against a graduation rate.
Thanks. Just one other small thing, then, I'm going to move on. I've been listening to, you know, kids choicing out and the district and, you know, going to charter schools and, you know, carrying money out with them. The question I have is, what happens if somebody goes to a parochial school or a private school? Do you get the state money for them, or is that-
So, if they homeschool, go to a parochial school, or go to a private school, it's as if they didn't financially exist for you or us.
Okay, now the big stuff. Based on riffing on what Jack and Dana had said, I'm looking at this. At first going to start it off with a metaphor, basically. I feel like a parent that's got two kids that need braces, the boiler just broke and the transmission in my car's out. Because within the context, this budget message was delivered based on the fact that we've got a fire station. We've got sewerization that's going to happen over the next forty years, and it's not cheap. And we're imposing a two percent restriction on ourselves. I look at your budget, I didn't have a Chromebook available, so I had to use this. But roughly twenty-five-point-eight percent is the increase number from your actual in two thousand and fifteen to where we're proposing in two thousand and nineteen. It's, you know, it's a five-year progression. I did notice the blip in there. There was one that was bigger than others. But, I mean, we all live within a context ourselves about what we can levy without an override. And your top-line budget for the folks who aren't, who haven't been following this through the years, if you were a school system within the town, we'd all be talking in terms of what the overall increase could be based on what we could sustain. But in this instance, based on the percentages, you just give us a bill and we've got to figure out how to run the town with what's left over after that. We're asking an awful lot of taxpayers. And I'm hoping that you can go back and look at some of where you're at and see if you can mitigate some of this. Because you can't keep going to the same well. I mean, as you point out with your students, they're tethered to some parents of some sort. If they're economically disadvantaged by inference, you're talking about parents who are economically disadvantaged. It's kind of difficult to sustain that model where it just keeps increasing in a fairly large amount. I mean, it's not a question, it's just a comment. Now, having, having said that, just a quick thought. Has anybody done any studies with these Chromebooks? Because I know the girl I'm raising uses one in the elementary school. But I've been reading an awful lot of data that suggests that information retention on the reading level is not as good as it is for paper. I mean, have you guys been tracking that?
I have to defer to our principals and technology director as to if they've done any studies.
Because it's a fairly young thought, I mean, that everybody's getting a computer deployed across different academic subjects. But as I pointed out to the kids through the years, you've got to know how to read in order to be able to follow the instructions, no matter what the course is. I'd be interested in hearing if they have any experience with that because we're throwing all in on this.
I think, I think a lot of it's adapting to new means of reading and taking notes. It's, I know for myself, courses that I've taken that were online courses to, to sort of, it's a, it's a bit of a learning curve to get used to highlighting, the electronically highlighting versus, I'm so used to having the paper and, you know, scribbling on the paper. And it's, it's a, it's a brave new world that they're launching into.
I get that. Well, back to the one thought, you know, off the Chromebook, I hope you can sharpen the pencil a bit because honestly, we didn't choose two percent because we were being austere and we wanted to be mean. We did it because recognizing the capacity of the individuals we're taxing, it's getting a little out of hand.
You have a second, Don?
Yeah.
I'm going to reserve some of my questions for later. Don touched on what I was going to say. I think two percent was our message. You know, I appreciate that your health insurance is figured into your total number. I look at things like the bathroom, maybe like the stabilization money. I know Jack would like to put as much as we can away. Chris reminded me about two weeks ago that we have to look at the whole budget picture because in some areas we're going to be able to reduce. But, you know, to Don's point, hopefully you can look at your budget. The bathrooms, to me, I'd like to know what the Booster Club is doing with the current money? If you could bring back those numbers to us. Scott, in a conversation we had about this, you said the Booster Company, Booster Club was kind of split in what they wanted to do with the money. Some parents wanted to go one direction with it, others wanted to go the other. I recall the lengthy discussion in building this facility that it wouldn't be shouldered on the backs of the taxpayers. And I go to every game. I appreciate the snack shack. I appreciate the thought of the bathrooms. But I also appreciate that we're asking another twenty-two and a half million for wastewater this year and six and a half million for a fire department. At some point, we have to say no to some things. So, thank you for all the information, and we look forward to seeing you again.
Thanks.
Stay put, like in one minute.
The finance committee is done. If the financial committee wants to adjourn their meeting and get... Thirty seconds. Nancy, you wanna come up for this? I, if you wanna come up for this, kind of give us an overview of where you ended up. Nancy, you wanna grab a chair, go ahead. So the regional school district, the updated five-year plan, we all met Town of Chatham School Committee and the Board of Selectmen for the Town of Harwich about three, three weeks ago or so, four weeks ago.
Yeah, probably about a month.
Okay, at the library. Nancy, can you just give us an update of where you guys went from there and where we're at today?
So from there, the school committee met to discuss the conversations that we had with the selectmen and tried to narrow down some of the major changes that weren't just tough type extras mentioned from the interim portion. And at our, all of that culminating in our last school committee meeting this past Thursday, the school committee voted a final draft to push forward to the selectmen, which you should have in front of you. The only major change since we met was the school committee finalized their thoughts and position on what they wanted to do and how the elementary school configuration and the pages shifted when things were removed, so excuse me a second, under the location and ownership of schools. So the major change was the school committee deciding that they wanted to be able to have in there the fact that the students shall attend schools in their town of residence unless the school committee votes to assign students on a basis other than the town of residence. And each town's Board of Selectmen by majority vote approves the school committee's vote. So that's the direction the school committee chose to go.
Thank you, Nancy. And I guess, I guess one thing to, to emphasize that I think's a point of confusion for some parents in our educational community, but also, I think, a point of confusion for the greater community. One of the slides that, you know, that I had in my presentation was anticipated class sizes at Harwich Elementary and Chatham Elementary. And, and at the moment, the, the Chatham Elementary classes on average are about a student to a, one and a half students smaller than Harwich Elementary. And, but they're, I think, one of the grade levels that goes the other direction. There's, you know, they're slightly larger at Chatham Elementary than Harwich Elementary. And I was asked, you know, I was asked, you know, so, you know, so how are you redoing the elementary schools? And, you know, the, the answer is that there's, there's not a plan to reconfigure, that we don't need to reconfigure. But, but the, a precipitating event that could be out there in the future, and a lot of these conversations are about how do you have the capacity to have the system be able to adjust out there in the future, is, is if we see that these class sizes start to really shift dramatically and that, and if, if for instance, Chatham continues to have low birth rates, you know, in that town and, and fewer children, do you have a situation where, you know, Chatham Elementary School is operating at an average class size around fourteen and Harwich Elementary is operating at an average class size closer to eighteen? And keep in mind that, you know, that Harwich taxpayers would be paying seventy-three percent of the bill for having really small classes in, in, in Chatham. You know, so how do we, you know, how do we find a way to equalize the educational experience and, and have, you know, equal student-teacher contact at, at the two elementary schools? So it's, you know, so I, I, I think from our school committee's perspective and the conversations we've had, it's, it's not to do anything right now, but to make sure that there, there is a relief valve that's different from the way the regional agreement currently reads, which is, "Chatham children shall go to Chatham Elementary School, Harwich should go to Harwich Elementary School and never the twain shall meet." And, you know, what might we be able to do or can we do something if we see a drastic difference in class sizes at some point in the future?
Thank you, Scott. Other than that, if memory serves me correct, there was really no issues with the rest of the document. It was more housekeeping. So that's the one we have to tackle tonight. And I'd like to vote on this because we have to put this before town meeting and get an article together this year to, to update the regional agreement. And I think the school committee would like to get this, us to vote this as quick as we can. And I know Chris needs us to. Don, I, I'll start with you. Are we all in agreement that there really isn't anything else in this document?
Right.
Okay. So on that subject, Don?
We're presupposing, thank you, Mr. Chair. We're presupposing though that going forward, we're gonna eliminate, you know, the town meeting altering the agreement?
No.
No.
Okay, I just wanna make sure that we clarify.
Town meeting has to always approve any changes to the regional agreement.
Okay, I mean, because we, we did discuss that in fairness at the last meeting, that that was something that was being considered.
That can't be, it, it, it's not, it's best of my knowledge, town, any changes to this regional agreement has to be approved by the school committee, each bound Board of Selectmen and town meeting. And then it actually goes on to the DESE and the commissioner for approval.
My understanding, it was this topic that, that we were, that we were struggling with. And, and correct me if I'm wrong, we're basically getting latitude, giving latitude here for the Board of Selectmen in both towns and the school committee to make that decision at the time if we need to make that decision.
Right.
That's what it's eliminating town meeting for.
And if that, if it's limited to that, then I'm okay with that because this was more of a universal thought because it's really difficult to change this. If, if that got jettisoned, looking at the agreement, you'd have to have ten percent of the member town registered voters to even be able to petition a change from that point forward. I like the idea that the people who are paying the bills get a chance to listen.
And I think it's, it's important to understand that, that, that going with this, with this modification would allow the school committee with the Boards of Selectmen to effect a change that, that a school district could put in place sooner. If, if you go through town meeting, the way the state's process is, after the town meeting vote, then the document goes off to the state so that, you know, so that if, if you see, oh, you know, the class sizes are really starting to head off the rails, you can't do anything about it for another year and a half. You know, this, it, it allows for the, the two towns and school committee to be more nimble in how they address a situation should it come to bear.
As it stands right now, if this is approved by town meeting, it would not be in effect until July one, 2019. If, and that's if it is approved.
Janelle, any questions on this?
I just have to be, I have to do my due diligence here for being an elected official. And the constituents who, who have reached out to me do not agree with this. So I have to represent them. Also, I know we only had four hundred and fifty-three people respond to the survey. That could be two hundred families because it could be a mother and a father or two parents, whatever it is. That's not a lot of people, I, I think, really. And when I think about all the people that could possibly have responded to that survey. And when this was going on with the survey time, it seemed like a lot of people didn't really understand the impact of each of the choices, you know, when we're talking about these elementary school ideas. And I'm a big fan of going back to allowing Harwich children to go to Chatham. Kind of a school choice. What do you call it, inter-district, intra-district school choice? I just feel like putting it in the hands of just the school committee and the Board of, Boards of Selectmen may not be the right choice. We really might need to have more input from townspeople. So I'm gonna have to be that person who represents the, that thought.
And just, just to clarify, the Harwich families still can go to Chatham Elementary School. It's just, we have to look at what the class sizes are going to be. And this past year, the decision was made that we needed to, I think we were able to allow three Harwich families to go to Chatham Elementary School, but diverted one of the teachers, one of the kindergarten teachers to Harwich Elementary School so that we could have some parity in class size, not have at, at the kindergarten level, level of seven student difference between the two towns.
Right. I, I do understand that.
And just to be clear, so you don't like the language in here that allows the two boards and the school committee to make that decision?
Correct.
You'd rather it wasn't in there and town meeting discussed it at the time?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Julie?
You know, I always want the feedback of the people who are paying the bills. But I also think we have to look at, you know, any kind of change that could impact kids' education, teachers. You know, really, if we, we have Chatham become its own tiny little school and have to wait a year and a half to correct that, that's not fair to all the other kids and teachers left in the other scenario. So I think that we do have to look at something that allows us to move quicker than a year and a half. So I, I don't really, I don't really have a problem with the, the language. It's unfortunate that our process takes so long, so.
Tyreke?
I support the language. I think we, we've argued here tonight that we have to worry about cost. We're asking to relook at the budget, this is a component to that. We also wanna have high educational standards and this gives you some flexibility to, for that. So I think the two issues, flexibility, we need to, we need to move forward with it.
I also support the language. I think, you know, our, our, our taxpayers have the right to come to these meetings. And I imagine if this change is gonna be made, there's gonna be a fair amount of public outcry on it. We're going to listen to it. At that point, we can vote no if we don't agree with your change and Chatham as well. Don, follow up?
Yeah, hearing what Janelle said, I, I have to agree that I'm hearing the same things, you know, from constituents. And I've got a kid who's in the fourth grade, you know, they're leaving now. And thought occurs to me, I mean, the mechanism is different from what options you get picked to remediate this. For whatever it's worth, it just seems like a kid that I've got, that I inherited is a little volatile, like emotionally, and it's kind of difficult to conceive of having a kid go from preschool and to another building and then in two years to another building. It's, especially in the formative years. I don't know how much discussion was had about that, but I do know that I've been hearing an awful lot from parents that aren't really enthused.
I just wanna be clear again, we're not voting that tonight.
This is the mechanism.
I think it needs to be very separate.
I agree.
Because I think that the options that Mr. Carpenter started the conversations with in the fall was to bring attention to the fact that there could be a problem in the future. And these are three possibilities. These aren't the three possibilities three years from now that we're gonna say, all right, these are the three we're gonna talk about. Those were three that he came up with after having some conversations to say, these might work. So these are not ones that the school committee has really discussed to say, we like this one, we like this one, we like this one. This was just kind of put out there to initiate the conversation, to kind of get people to understand that there is a situation that we would like to look for into the future. So I, while I, I understand that that's, and it's great that that's kind of gotten the attention so that people are paying attention now to look at what we're trying to do. But those are, they're two very different situations. What we're looking for is just to have the opportunity to have a conversation about it. And then we can come back and say, this is what we think.
I, I get that. The only reason I'm bringing this up is because sometimes you have to realize that you may have a different viewing audience than we do. So I wanna make sure that the citizens in this town are fully aware of where, because I'm not sure who saw that last meeting, to be honest with you. And our obligation is to make sure that the town knows, you know?
I think they're one in the same. You're saying they're two separate things. I think they're one in the same in that this language is negating the process of public involvement and putting it into the role of the, the school committee and the Boards of Selectmen to make the decision for the two towns. So while this doesn't specifically say those three options, it doesn't negate them either. And there may be a fourth or a fifth option. It's, it's basically taking the power and taking it away from the town meeting and the people that, you know, maybe wanna have a voice. And like Michael said, they could go to your, you know, school committee meeting, to the selectman meeting. But ultimately, it comes down to, how many people are on the school committee? Eight? It comes down to eighteen people making a choice for whatever the populations are. I don't know how, what the school age populations are, but I think that's wrong. And I have to stand behind the people who have, who, you know, said, hey, look, please be my voice and don't vote for this.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I would like to make a motion.
Can you, one, one second, please? Chris, there, there was one other major change in this agreement that had to do with capital expenses.
Yes, thank you.
Can you just outline that real quick because that's... You guys can go ahead and... Sorry, Don, Larry, I just wanted to...
No, fine, yeah, I squared it up.
I know, operationally, there was some concern in regards to, yeah, lending the capital costs. And I think those changes were, that we had talked about earlier, had been incorporated into the document.
Yes, so, so this talks about how the capital costs are attributable to the facilities under the custody, under the custody and control of the district. So I, I guess, I guess in short, if we think of it more of the elementary schools, so, you know, so the, the elementary schools that are owned by the two towns, the capital cost for those facilities would be related to that town, you know, the town that owns that building, unless there was some sort of reconfiguration of the elementary schools that had all the children attending, in which case it would have the capital costs would be split based on the foundation, you know, enrollments that, so, so at, at, at present, there's a, there's a differentiation in the agreement as it currently stands with how capital is assessed versus operating. And this is just trying to kind of help clarify how, how it should happen on the elementary level in particular.
Thanks, Scott. I only brought it up because that was the other significant change. I'll make sure none of the board, we, we discussed this last time and seemed to agree with it. Any comments, Larry?
No.
Julie?
No.
Janelle?
No.
Don? Chris, you, Chris, you reviewed it as well and you comfortable with it?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Larry?
With that, I move, we, we affirm the agreement between the towns of Chatham and Harwich with respect to the formation of a regional school district as presented in our packet tonight.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the revised regional agreement between the Montemoye Regional School District and the Town of Harwich. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
You guys will provide that language so we can incorporate it into our warrant during the process of developing warrant.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dan, you wanna come up?
This is from the meeting a month ago.
Next up tonight is the Water Department RFP for the wireless communication lease. If you all remember, Dan was before us. They have a new wireless provider that was interested in leasing and putting a cell tower on Water Department land, which is under the control of the Board of Selectmen. Dan, I see in the, the first part of the packet is a question to Chris Clark and John, our town attorney, John Giorgio, stating that there was a 2013 annual town meeting vote for a lease on 196 Chatham Road. I think it was your interpretation that that vote still stands today and that we can proceed with the RFP. Chris, I don't know if you heard back from John, there was nothing in here.
Yeah, no, he, he actually concurred with the, with the opinion that because it was in 2013 that we could utilize that 2013 language. And just so the board remembers that we actually did have some discussions and due to business decision, AT&amp;T, I think it was at the time, backed out. So there was an intent to go forward from the town side, but it was a business decision on AT&amp;T. So really, the only question here, I think, before the board is if there wants, if there's gonna be any changes, then we'd have to go back through the process. If the board's comfortable with what you did in 2013 and town meeting did, then we can proceed according to that. We wanted to make sure that you at least had the opportunity to, to let us know.
And the biggest piece of this is a fifty-fifty split on the finances, on the money that comes in.
Correct.
Short of that, there's really no changes, correct?
Correct.
Don? All set? Janelle?
I'm all set too.
Julie? Larry?
I'm set.
So I'd like to, I'll bring this back for the board to discuss again because I'd like to discuss where that money's gonna go. So whether it be into the affordable housing... So whether it be into the Affordable Housing Trust or OPEC, I'd like to come up with a place to, to vote to stick that money.
Sure.
All set?
Thanks, Dan.
Alright. Thanks, Dan.
Um, just, so moving forward, I have the old RFP document and now that we have agreement, you know, I'm gonna revise that. I can go work with Chris to get that put out and, uh, we can go from there.
Perfect. Thank you, Dan. Uh, next up, Huck, Harwich Cultural Center, Mass Cultural Council Liaison. Janelle, you asked for this on the, um, agenda, so will you run with this?
Sure. So, uh, for the public, um, Harwich has been chosen, one of seven communities, we're the only town, the other, uh, six are cities, to, um, partake in a pilot program that is emphasizing culture and marrying it with economic development, uh, kinda putting us on the map. And I'm actually going to defer the, uh, any further details, uh, that people may have questions to Tina Games, who is our chair of our cultural council, because she is really the one that has been mostly in contact with the Massachusetts Cultural Council leader, who came to visit us, um, last week and she took a tour of our cultural center. And then we had a meeting about, uh, how this all would, uh, play out. Basically, um, we have to decide as a town that we want to, uh, be part of this pilot program. And, um, of course, any pilot program is always a little bit ambiguous, uh, but we have in our packet the information. Um, we would have to assign one, uh, town representative, um, to be the liaison between the, uh, Mass Cultural Council and us, as well as our own cultural council will be part of that too, the, um, whoever is chair. Um, so we were talking about our town planner, who is Charlene, uh, to be that person. And if you read, uh, through the packet information, uh, you should see a little bit, you can have a little bit more detail. It's a perfect time, uh, with our cultural center just being, um, kind of, you know, born. And then, uh, the idea of having artisan shacks in Harwich, uh, at the, uh, Saco Tucket, Harwich Port becoming a viable artist community with all the new gallery space, um, the fact that we have our musical strolls every single week. Um, also South Harwich Meeting House opening in March. It really is just the absolute perfect time. That's it in a nutshell.
And the other piece of that was also involving the Chamber of Commerce in this and, uh, having two representatives to this committee. One would be Charlene as the town planner and the other would be Cindy Williams as the executive director of the chamber, which she attended the meeting and, and, uh, was interested and, and, and our, our own cultural councils.
And all, the other part is, there's money. You get grants, so, yeah, I forgot that part.
Tina, did you wanna add anything or you all sit?
Uh, no, um, well, first of all, Tina Games, Chair of the Harwich Cultural Council, I think you did a great job. Thank you very much. I will, um, take this moment in pu- in public to thank both of you and Cindy and Erica and Carolyn, um, for hosting the Massachusetts Cultural Council last week. It was a fabulous visit and they were very, very impressed, um, with our interest. So I just wanna publicly thank all of you for being a part of that.
Thanks for making it happen.
Questions from the board? Larry?
I don't, sounds like a good opportunity.
Julie?
I think it's a great opportunity.
Don?
Same.
Janelle, do you wanna make a motion, uh, and add Cindy and Charlene into that as the liaisons?
Okay, so, um, I would make a motion that, uh, uh, the town of Harwich accept the, um, invitation by the Massachusetts Cultural Council to be a pilot, uh, town program with their cultural compact, uh, assigning Charlene Greenhouse, our town planner, as the liaison representing the town and Cindy Williams, the liaison representing the Harwich Chamber of Commerce.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve what Janelle said. Any discussion?
Did you get that, Chris?
I don't know, we might wanna reconsider that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
Thanks, Tina.
Uh, Janelle, this is another one of yours. Green Communities Building Audit Grants.
So I just, I don't have any real backup material for this. This is, um, something I am going to ask Chris to, Chris's help. So when I went to the, um, MMA, uh, trade show, Green Communities had a table and so I think I was with you, Julie, when, right? And we stopped there and Julie was talking to our representative, whose name escapes me right now, Seth.
Seth.
And while she was getting caught up to speed on the meeting that I had partially attended last fall, um, I was talking to another fellow who has the North Shore and we were talking about, um, various things in our town and I was telling him about the cultural center and he said, oh, you should apply for this grant. And he showed me on the, uh, brochure and I can't remember the name of it. Went through all, took some information down and then Seth piped in, oh, no, they can't apply for that. They need to go through Cape Light Compact. And he gave me the name of, I think her name was Martha Stone, and I said, well, what does that mean? Ca- what do we need to do? And he said that what they will do is come out and do a building assessment. Um, and then there are monies to, uh, upgrade the heating system or whatever they find, just like they do for residentials. So I just wanted to bring that information back and, uh, kind of move forward on that.
Yeah, I, I, I think to that end, uh, through you, Ms. Chairman, uh, when we did have that meeting, they did alert us that we did have the potential, I think it was about a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars that we would have accessibility to. There are three or four things that we need to have, the board vote and town meeting vote, so we will line those up for this coming town meeting. Uh, upon the completion of that, then we would automatically be, uh, lined up for that hundred and forty-five thousand dollar grant. On the, uh, coordination with Cape Light Compact, uh, Sean does that already and several buildings have been reviewed and looked at. Uh, so Sean had kind of a separate discussion with Seth about what the sequence of events would be and can we time things? So that way we can line up the potential for the grant with the work that needs to be done at the facility. So, uh, I think really the first step is we need to get the designation as a Greens, Green Community, uh, number one. And then that will give us the availability for the one-time money, the hundred and forty-seven, and then the continuing ability to apply for competitive grants after that. So the first step is to do that. In terms of coordination with Cape Light Compact, you, you have my assurance that we've done that very aggressively in the time that Sean's been here. So those audits have been done in, in many, in many places. I'm not sure because of the status of the, uh, cultural center and it's not, are we keeping it, are we not keeping it? That, I don't know if, uh, a full assessment has been done on that, uh, at this point. Thank you, Chris.
How close are we to the, uh, Green Communities? We were gathering more information and Planning Board was discussing it. How close are we to bringing that back to the board for a vote?
I think it's just a matter of putting the warrant articles together and then if the board votes to support those warrant articles, then it will go forward.
So we're on time to, for our town meeting and everything with that?
I believe, yeah, we're, we're sequenced the organizationally to, to be on for the May, uh, town meeting.
Does the board have any more, um, does the board want me to put this on as an agenda item? Does the board have more questions before the warrant articles are drafted?
Yeah, there's still the warrant articles.
What warrant articles?
I mean, this is the, we have to adopt the stretch code in the building and then we have to have the provision of zoning for, uh, location of a... Yeah, for a research site, um, you know, for, so, so we have those...
Designate an area.
Yes, we have to designate an area.
Right.
So it's a zoning and stretch code and then, I'm going from recollection here. Uh, one of the other ones was, I think the board can vote, uh, that any vehicles we have, uh, need to be fuel-efficient vehicles. So that was number three. And I'm missing a, I'm missing a fourth that's not coming to me.
We, we have one designation already.
It's the, the, the one you haven't mentioned is establishing a baseline on our current energy usage and then developing a plan for reducing it by twenty, twenty percent at some point in the future. So there are the five criteria and once we have a sat- satisfied those, then we can apply for the grant. Uh, and it's, it's money for things as, as Julie brought up at one of your previous meetings for one of the items that Sean Libby has requested in the capital plan, namely, uh, the, the energy management uh, software for some of the buildings. Uh, the Paragon report that was, uh, paid for by the Cape Light Compact and was submitted to Sean a year ago last August, uh, covered all the municipal facilities, but possibly left out the school because of its, its, its status at that time.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions for that?
I just wanted to add a few things. This, uh, gentleman was talking about the tech high school. He said they have a green roof on that. I don't know why we can't add that to the thing if we could take advantage. They were trying to get twenty percent reduction. This new fire station should have energy codes. They should be calculating all the energy reduction is and use that as part of the twenty percent reduction. The same thing as this, uh, Har- uh, Harwich Cultural Center. All these buildings ought to be incorporated in this twenty percent reduction. So we take advantage of it and get grants probably to maybe even pay for some of these things on this Green Community.
Agreed. Thank you. So, Chris, we're on schedule?
Yes.
Okay. Anyone else have anything else on that?
No.
Special, uh, town meeting timeline. Chris, do you wanna take that?
Yeah, just, uh, in terms of this, uh, Mr. Chairman, I, I appreciate that, uh, a couple of board members went to the, went to the meeting at MMA to get some in- information on the, uh, marijuana. Uh, basically what we heard back from the attorney, um, in, in KP Law, it was, uh, Brian Riley, uh, who was the attorney. I've had some experience with Brian, a ca- very capable attorney. He actually felt that based upon, uh, the two comments that were made, that I think, uh, Larry, you had pointed out in regards to, uh, that they have to have a community meeting, that there is a requirement for a community meeting for someone that wants to come in. Uh, there's no negatives, if you would, if you don't do it, but there certainly seems to be an implied that you should, you should have a communication with the community. And then the second was the host community agreement, which I think you guys both took two pieces away. And the long story short is that, uh, Attorney, uh, Riley has kinda indicated that without a active application before us and with the town's track record already, uh, and this certainly, this board's track record of being opposed to it, that he felt that, um, there's always a risk. You can't ask for black and white from an attorney. But it, there's always some element of risk, but that the town has taken probably adequate measures that we do not, do not need to have a town meeting in March to beat the April first deadline because we have those things well underway. So his recommendation was that we can go forward, uh, and just do it within the confines, the, the same marijuana topics that we've talked about in the past. Continue forward with that and do that at the May town meeting. I, I think that was kinda where the board was sensing unless it was urgency to...
So I'm looking for a consensus of the board. Larry?
Uh, no, I agree. I, I think the attorney also mentioned that because we have our ban, that would give us more leeway than we thought we originally had. So there, we have three, uh, issues in our favor, I think, to avoid the meeting. So I, I'm, I'm, this, this, uh, march ahead as town meeting.
Julie?
Yeah, I would agree. I mean, the, the bits and pieces I could hear at that meeting sounded like we were gonna be okay, so.
Janelle?
Yep, no town meeting, no special town meeting.
Don?
I'm gonna be the interloper here. Uh, i- in looking at this, this is a whole lot of nothing.
Really, it's a legal document.
Well, there you go. It's a redundancy, uh, but it is a whole lot of nothing because he keeps talking about one would suggest that and one could infer that. But the reality is, I'm still where I was months ago, is the state has failed us. Uh, there is no, no path here and in some interesting areas, there's actually more protection for medical marijuana than there is for recreational marijuana. In, in this, and I, he still can't answer the question about, uh, will they actually listen to this? I, I know he's made an attempt and a run at it in a couple of ways, but he hasn't said, no, they're not, and they have not said, no, we're not gonna receive an application unless, uh, you, you actually have agreed, uh, to host it. So, I mean, I, I'm not gonna push this to a town meeting, but I'm still saying that this is not an answer really. It's, it's kind of what we expected to get.
So you don't wanna make a motion to have a town meeting? Is that what you said?
I, I do wanna get to my car without the tires being slashed, so, uh, no, I'm not...
I'm comfortable with not having an additional town meeting. I think we've done more than enough. Alright, so that's the answer. Chris, no, no town meeting.
So we'll do it in the, as part of the May, so just do a special, right? So take an action on it.
We'll see you in June.
Okay. Next up, Pleasant Bay Alliance. Carol, thank you for your patience. I put this back on the, uh, back on the agenda. Carol was here last week and gave us an update. One of the requests in the update was to extend the MOU to reflect what the permit is going to be, the watershed permit, which was twenty years.
Yeah, just on this, Mr. Chairman, we, we did receive a legal opinion fairly late on Thursday. I did not, and I apologize to Carol, did not get it to her in, in timely fashion as I sort of put up. But in terms of, uh, Attorney Giorgio, we had sent him some of the materials and they were older materials. We sent him the newer materials. And so he did have a couple of comments. Uh, one, he had minor comments from earlier, which I'll make sure we forward all those to, to Carol for incorporation. And then the, the second, which I, I did have a discussion with him at the, uh, MMA trade show on this very topic, uh, that under the memorandum of agreement on Pleasant Bay, that they actually have, uh, the town, Pleasant Bay Alliance, actually have the town of Chatham as their fiscal agent. And it's good to have and identify a fiscal agent that if there's any grants or any monies that are gonna be, uh, exhibited. I made the suggestion that the MOU already had Chatham as it, so why not incorporate that into the IMA? Uh, so I think he's asking for some wording to be in the document, uh, to reflect that. I wouldn't imagine that's gonna be controversial with, with the other towns, uh, in terms of that, but...
Good evening, Carol Ridley. Um, no, I, I wouldn't either. Um, you know, we're, we're in the process. In fact, just before coming here this evening, I was over in, in Chatham, meeting with that board for the first time on this. Um, and they're taking the language under advisement and, and we'll share it with their council, so they may have some language that they'll wanna throw in there as well. So I think what we'd like to do is just take all of these suggestions and, you know, make the changes. Um, I, I don't see any issues in, uh, what Mr. Giorgio has said that raise any red flags for me. Um, we would make the changes as suggested and then just recirculate the documents to all the boards, just to make sure all the issues are covered.
Okay.
Okay.
So tonight, if we could, uh, anyone have any issues with the memorandum of understanding? I mean, the IMA, I guess we'll wait on until the changes are made.
And, and Chatham has been the fiscal agent for the entire period of the, uh, and this worked out, worked well.
Is that acceptable, Carol?
Uh, excuse me?
You want us to wait on, uh, we'll wait on voting the IMA until those changes are all made and recirculated or?
Yes, you probably should because you wanna vote on that final document. I guess the key issue is just the determination, which is your judgment call, as to whether you wanna put this on the warrant. Which I think was another matter you wanted to take under consideration.
So first off, on the MOU, does anyone have any changes on the memorandum of understanding or a problem with making it a twenty-year, twenty-year change?
Uh, no, I, I think it's appropriate as we talked last time.
Okay. Don?
No, I agree with you.
The other thing, we could always put things on the warrant and then if there's no action, then you can do the IP, IPP, right? Indefinitely postponed. So, yeah, there's probably no harm to putting things on the warrant and then if the board chooses to, to not take action, then that's certainly the board's prerogative. And we have the language already, I think, from Carol on the draft language for the warrant article, so we have that.
For both the IMA and the, and the update of the plan and the MOU.
Okay, we can put those on and then you can make a decision later, once we get the final document.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I would, uh, Ms. Chairman, I'd like that because I think there's some advantage having on the, uh, that town meeting because it does open some discussion. It helps set the stage for the, uh, target watershed action going, you know, will be coming, if not now, soon. And it promotes the, uh, what we're doing and, you know, the whole, uh, CWP.
I agree. Julie?
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
So you wanna put it on the warrant as well?
Yep.
Janelle?
Yep.
Don?
Still.
Happy putting it on the warrant?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Thank you, Carol.
Thank you very much.
Okay, what's next?
Under Town Administrator Report.
Town Administrator's Report.
So I just have a, a few items that recognize the hour, so I, I will keep, uh, things somewhat brief. I just, I, I did wanna express a, uh, just a personal thank you to the department heads that attended the CPC meeting last week, as well as the members of CPC. Uh, I thought that, uh, several department heads got up. I know several members of the board were in attendance as well. Uh, and it did feel, at least I felt like we were actually heard and, and got some favorable votes, uh, to help the townspeople move the community forward. Uh, so I just wanted to kind of publicly thank them for their, uh, support, uh, of the organization and I thought that they were a good partner in that in the final analysis. And just on the, uh, there has been some discussion on the Cape Tribe Municipal Health Group, uh, the, the six percent. Uh, it was obviously good news. We've had, and apparently across the state, uh, kind of historically, um, positive information where the, the losses have not been that high on health insurance, so it's not just us. It's something that's occurring statewide. Uh, it is a trend that has happened for seven months, so it's not... It is a trend that has happened for seven months, so it's not a tremendously long trend. But I think that it does give us the opportunity to, if that trend continues, to hopefully provide some rate stabilization and not have these 12 to 15%, you know, numbers that we've been dealing with the last two or three years. But I, I can't say enough that, you know, our wellness programs, I think, have had some positive effects. Our experience needs to stay strong, and the high deductible plans have had really positive results. So the more of that, and I might do a little bit more at a different time, because I decided to be a guinea pig and did the high deductible myself, and just talk a little bit about that at a night where we have a little bit more time. Also, next topic, Bob Lawton started today, so he is on board. Bob is the previous administrator in Yarmouth, so one of the tasks, and he's already started it, is to work on the housing trust. And, you know, I, I had a conversation with him today, and I know there was some concern about delay. That's going to go very quickly. We're going to wait, I think, longer for the Attorney General to sign off on it, then it's going to take us to get the paperwork ready to submit. So I, I'm very optimistic that we'll be able to, to move pretty quickly. And then I, I didn't get at the beginning, but, you know, I've been in town government for a long time, and I've seen a lot of things. And, you know, I'm hard pressed to think of somebody that has done what Jimmy Marsaline did for this community. You know, I've been in different towns, and it's just, it's, it's kind of sad to see a generation and such a really nice and generous person. I think, Mr. Chairman, you shared some of his war experience with me, and it just, what a, what a great American, and it really is a loss for the community. So hopefully, you know, maybe moving forward is something that the community can think to do to, to pay a little better tribute. So I know, actually, Mr. Chairman, I know you had mentioned that to me, and I think it deserves some consideration moving forward. But I just wanted to express, I did have an opportunity to meet his son, I think, the other night. So just to express to the family, it's tough to lose a great person like that.
Thank you for that, Chris.
Thank you.
Suckman's Report, Don?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Further what Chris just said, I, I think it's important to at least mention, I'm hoping that people would read the Harwich Hall of Fame right up in the community center, but one of the things that struck me about him, we saw the macro stuff tonight with the making it possible for the tech school and that kind of stuff, but Jimmy actually had essentially his own affordable housing program. He built stuff, he had people lease them, and he counted that towards purchasing them. I mean, it was a remarkable thing, that he had a heart that big. Now, moving, moving back to us, mundane for a second, I need a little bit of guidance going forward. I'm assuming that we could, that people could put in a placeholder, but I'd rather have as much stuff that's firmed up, as far as the Bylaw and Charter Review Committee goes. I know that we promised last year on the committee that we'd come back with follow-on bylaw changes that would give numbers to committees, because they were deleted last year. The question I have, as I saw a draft for a combined wastewater water commission, and so that, that text has already kind of been developed. What else do you really want me to convey to them? Because they don't have much more than 10 days left to be able to do something, to have, you know, an article to submit, and I'm sure that there's a few. One of them that came to mind was clarifying ex officio members and the relationship between proposing them and us confirming them. It, it's kind of fudgy, although it pretty clearly makes them, all committees are appointments.
Chris?
Yeah, just to that, I had asked Attorney Giorgio to prepare some of the ones that we knew were coming like that in terms of it, so he did, he did prepare some of it. I think there's five or six. I, I was going to kind of put all those together and present them to the Charter bylaw, but they, their meeting, January, what was it, this week?
January's up this week.
Well, the January 2nd meeting, which I was trying to gear for, they canceled the meeting. So we can certainly try to put that material, when is it, not tomorrow night, Wednesday night? I should be able to get it to you, Don, to provide what we have so far.
I, I don't want to disparage him, and I know he lives in Chatham, so this would be an out-of-town channel, but he can get to YouTube. The last time he wrote them, I wound up having, like, after-school time to rewrite them. So I'd like to get them as soon as possible.
I can get those to you, tomorrow.
This is not a generic one-size-fits-all, for, this is the kind of thing that a town would put.
Okay, if you can get, if you can get them to Don, and then I'll agenda this for next week, and we'll just have a quick conversation.
Yeah, because I don't want to get to the day after all of this and say, "Oh, my gosh, they should have filed."
Larry?
Quick comment, we've had discussions periodically over revol participation, is that something we need to, does that affect the charter?
I'll agenda this next week, and we'll, we'll run through it. But no, we, we, the, the conversation that I recall was just the amount of times you can.
I was a specific member of the Planning Board, and, and I think you guys did vote to approve that.
Yeah.
There's a state law that covers.
There's state law, I just want to know if we want to do. I don't want to discuss it tonight, it's just a topic you throw out.
I just don't want anything slapdash happening.
Anything else?
Our next meeting, honestly, is going to be too late for them to even be.
Okay, so Chris will get you what he has.
Okay, that's fine.
Anything else from Don, Janelle?
I don't have anything.
Julie?
I just want to reiterate the thanks to CPA for hearing our priorities and really, you know, helping us help the taxpayers, so I want to thank them for that. And I had a few interactions in my life with Jimmy Marsaline, and I, they were always very nice, and it's a, it's a real loss for her, which I know he did an awful lot for the town, so.
Larry?
Probably few in town that haven't had interactions with Jimmy, you know, he was well-known, and I've always, well, enough said, I have nothing else.
Okay. I, I just echo the rest of the board, thanks CPC. The committee did, I thought, did an excellent job. I think they did listen to the board. But beyond listening to the board, I think that they did a lot of due diligence, a lot of homework, and spent an awful lot of time reviewing these articles. I think we all did a, I think Norm Clark said it best, they're part of the puzzle. And I think we did a great job for the taxpayers of this town, and we're getting a lot of important projects done.
Cultural Center, that's something I wanted to say. I just wanted to say, I attended the Cultural Center Business After Hours that the chamber hosted, and it was really well, what was it?
Attended.
Well-attended. It's late. And it was great, and so thank you to Cindy, thank you to Carolyn and Erica, it was really, really a great place. And it came right after that meeting we had with Mass Cultural Council, that was Thursday.
Kudos to whoever made those little sandwiches with the tuna and the steak on.
Mason jar.
Yeah.
There's a plug.
Motion to adjourn?